Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, June 3rd City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Baney?
Here.
Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Jett?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring June 21st through 28th as Bicycle Week in the city of McHenry. The proclamation reads in substance as follows. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council and the city of McHenry that the week of June 21st to June 28th, 2019 is hereby designated as City of McHenry's Bicycle Week and all residents are encouraged to enjoy riding bicycles in a safe and responsible manner. Be it further proclaimed that all motor vehicle drivers and bicyclists are encouraged to participate in Illinois Bicycle Safety Quiz Challenge available at www.bicyclesafetyquiz.com. Be it further proclaimed that the city clerk and the city of McHenry is hereby authorized to spread the copy of this proclamation upon the records of the city of McHenry dated at the city of McHenry, Illinois this third day of June 2019. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the city council at this time? Sir, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for public record, please.
I'm Jeff Varda, 3400 Biscayne, McHenry, and I'm from the Landmark Commission. And I want to just do some public recognition. I didn't know how else to do it, so this is what I'm doing. The Colby Peterson Farm Dairy Barn Floor Support Project. We have a lot of volunteer help. I wanted to recognize Mike Peterson for the cleaning of the dairy barn at Colby Peterson Farm. Mark Follier for construction for installation of the plywood support and providing the labor for the west side of the dairy barn. And Home Depot for providing us with the Community Impact Grant to cover the cost of the material for the project. The second thing is the National Register of Historic Places Application and Nomination Project. Sue, you're ahead of me. Good job. You're hired. You're hired. And this came based upon a recommendation from the marketing research that was done through Bill and the Parks Department. As one of the first steps that we should take, and it was something that we could do that wasn't going to cost us anything and that we could move ahead on fairly quickly. Loyola University Department of Public History, first to be recognized, they provided the PhD doctoral students to do the work. Shawn Jacobson, Emily Taylor, and Dr. Karen Mansky, who heads the Department of Public History at Loyola. And I've given you all a copy. I really encourage you to read that. Sometimes I don't feel like we totally understand what we have with Colby Peterson Farm. And when you hear it in context from people who appreciate and deal with history, it's you really kind of see it differently. We see it locally. They presented it and made me understand its significance nationally, statewide, as well as locally. So I encourage you to get through. Start with the narrative description and the in the center part is where they start to place it in historical context. And it's significant, kind of brought a tear to my eye. And frankly, I saw it along with about 10 other presentations for the National Register of Historic Places, and ours stood out buying far above all the others. It was impressive. So, but also along with that, I wanted to recognize Pat Schaefer, who's in the back, and Zalinda Paluch, Pat, which is not here. But as long as we've got all three of them back there, Karen Geese and Zalinda Paluch and Pat Schaefer also for taking care of and single-handedly keeping that farmhouse going. And last, Mike Peterson again, who came out and spent a couple days with these students explaining things. Mike, who was a Peterson with an O in, Peterson Farm is with an E in, actually worked on that farm when he was a kid here in McHenry. He has some great stories. But that's it. Other than, I also have an official invitation and an invite to Peterson Farm Day coming up on June 23rd. And also, you know, we have some new members. We would like to give you an invite anytime you'd like a tour of the property and a little historical lecture, et cetera. Would be more than glad to see you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. I want to thank the entire Landmark Commission for all you've done with the Peterson Farm and everything you can do throughout the city of McHenry. So, thank you very much. Anyone else would like to make a public comment? If it's regarding an item that's on the agenda, we'll wait till that item is brought forth. So, yeah. Nope? We'll wait. We'll wait. Any other public comment of items that are not on this agenda? I see none. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any council members wanting to pull any consent items off this agenda for approval? No? This time looking for a motion to approve 6A through 6F on the consent agenda. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion on these items? See none, but please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Moving on to the agenda items here, I'm going to kind of change some things up to try some things out versus just open discussion. We're going to round robin, kind of give everyone an opportunity to at least say something per item. We'll go to the public for a public comment, and we'll come back and then open discussion at that point. So, we'll try that out and see how it goes and see if we can try to get more opportunity from all the council. All right? So, moving on to item 7A, discussion to approve a conditional use permit to allow the outside storage of vehicles in conjunction with a towing operation at 4564 Bow Valley Road. Director Martin, you want to present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. Council is being asked to consider a conditional use permit to allow outside storage of vehicles in conjunction with a towing operation at 4564 Bow Valley Road. I just want to mention, Alderman Schaefer brought to my attention, one of the conditions is the property shall be cleared of all debris, including any inoperable vehicles, which obviously they may have some inoperable vehicles. Now, the vehicles will be kept in an enclosed area. What I meant by that was that the inoperable vehicles can't be kept all over the property. But if that condition is to, council chooses to change that, change inoperable to leaking vehicles, as another word, instead of inoperable. But I just meant that if cars all over the property, they have to be maintained in the enclosed area just south of the building.
Thank you, Doug. Any comments, questions on this item? See none. The aptun is here, so if you do have questions for him. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? See none. I'm going back to council for a motion to approve 7A as presented. Alderman Santee?
What you just mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I didn't do it. I'm like, oh, the second item will do that. No, so we'll go ahead and do it, yeah. Alderman Santee?
When I look at the map, it's 35. 36, I think. Thank you. Or 35. Any staff concerns if, in regards to this conditional use, if and when there is a road that's built off of, which would be Ridgeway and actually turn into Dartmore, in regards to, it does curve towards the does curve towards the north and heading to east, back towards 31, in regards to, you know, having enough land between this and at some point in the future, potential retail out there, actual retail out there. I know the map kind of cuts it off. Just a, you know, concern, I don't think it's too close, but I am not a professional.
I don't have any concern. The building's kind of south on the property, more south on the property than to the north property line, so there's a lot of land out there. So, I don't have any concern.
Okay. And it just, if and when future plans, it's ever built out around there to, you know, if it's established, who knows what it could be back there? I don't, I'd say, if anybody can recall, what if the consensus is a comprehensive plan back there, other than just farm land? I have no idea. I'm just concerned if it was ever to become, you know, an attractive area for retail or residential, that would be my concern. If you're comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it.
You comfortable with it, Doug?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, number one, I remember the proposal from many years ago, probably almost 30 years ago, where they taught shopping center on the corner and townhouses on the rest. And I think in our comprehensive plan, we probably still show residential over there, multifamily probably even on some of it. I don't think we're looking at any kind of retail on review. This area has always been a more of a storage and industrial type area. Needless to say, whatever gets developed all the way around the edges of these properties might influence whatever gets developed next to it. Possibly we'll make the developers do more buffering or whatever. I think in this issue, in this case of what's being proposed, all we need to look at is that it's the wording was, which seems quite tight, quite tight as far as where it will be maintained and operated the way we expect it to be. So, I don't have any other issues.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
Doug answered my original question too, and I know when we, we just recently did this, I believe, for Cornerstone, who I think had property beforehand, and the one thing that I was concerned about then was just that there wouldn't be any like used cars and used boats and used vehicles and things like that for sale along the, their little driveway along 31, and I think that was covered back then, and that's not their plan here, so I'm good.
Thank you. Alderman Baney?
I'm good.
Thank you. Alderman Mahavik, just one question. So, one of the conditions says vehicles must be stored in the area indicated in the site plan, and it shows an arrow on page 35. Is that, what area are we referring to? There's the whole area outlined in blue? If that's blue, green, whatever.
The area is directly south of the building. It's not the, no, it's not the whole area outlined in blue.
So, the blue area south of the building?
The blue area south of the building.
Is that on page one?
It's actually, it's actually the blue area to the right. It's not the building you're seeing all the way close to the property line. It's, it's a blue area south of the building.
Okay. Now, based on the conditions listed here, I find it reasonable. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you. Alderman Glad?
I don't have a problem with this.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Just a comment, I was on public planning and zoning when you came and presented. I appreciate your cooperative effort and your answering all the questions at that time and sticking to the requirements, so thank you. So, no other comments.
Great. Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? Looking for a motion on item 7A as presented. Alderwoman Baney?
I'll make that motion. 7A is presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Alderman Miller? Discussion on this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion to approve the issuance of a Class A liquor license to Whiskey Straight LLC located at 3932 West, no, 3932 Main Street, McHenry, Illinois. Chief, you mind presenting this item?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Jett. Staff is presenting council with a proposal for consideration and issuance of a Class A liquor license to a new business to be located at 3932 West Main Street. This new business, identified as Whiskey Straight, is an upscale men's barber shop. The tax due will find a detailed summary of this unique business plan that would be designed to grow our downtown business district, specifically Main Street, by filling a vacant building and bringing a unique business to McHenry. The owners of this new business are established business owners here in McHenry and in Crystal Lake, and they both bring extensive experience in the sales of alcohol and the management of barber shops. Staff, along with the business owners, are present to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, chief. I'll go ahead and ask council for any questions or comments. Alderman Santee?
Yeah, some questions probably for Mr. Hart and Mr. Slimco, so if you ask him so.
Please state your name and address for public record, please.
Daniel Hart, 415 Washington, Woodstock, Illinois.
Kevin Slimco, 2123 Hillside, Paris, Carolina, Illinois.
Thank you.
Mr. Slimco, so you operate a facility in Crystal Lake, correct?
That is correct.
Right, downtown?
Yes.
For, for how long?
I've had the shop for 14 years.
Okay. Successful shop?
Yes, I would say so.
Okay. So, this is a little bit more unique than just that shop that you have there. Why not stay with that business plan that worked so successfully in Crystal Lake and do that here in McHenry?
Well, part of the reason I believe that my business is successful is that the people who work in my shop are compensated very well. We treat each other like family, so it's not as if we are running, at my shop, that Slim's Barber Shop, it's not like we're running great clips per se where people are paid on hourly wage. They're paid based on their merit and based on their skill and ability to deal with customers on a day-to-day basis. And I'd like to continue that, that portion of the business up here. But the other thing is paying customer, or paying our employees that well definitely hurts the bottom line if we're just doing air cuts. So, it's a lot of work to run a barber shop and to be able to pay my employees that amount of money to keep good employees, it would be difficult for me to justify the time that I would be spending on that job.
And so is that part of the justification then to, because if you have a successful business right now for 14 years, is that part of your justification to look at actually attaching a very, what was being discussed and what was discussed two weeks ago, very unique personal or services type of liquor license? Is that needed or is that part of the justification, which your explanation just was?
I'm not sure then following your question.
You've got a very successful business for 14 years, and you talked about how you pay a certain higher rate. It's successful with that business plan there, why not just bring that business plan to McHenry unless now you think it's, it's cost more to have it here or the wages are going to go up, you know, here in McHenry?
Well, no, I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. I will be keeping the shop that I currently have.
Sure.
So, for me to run two businesses at the same time and having the same type of overhead at two different businesses would be difficult, so I would like to get further income from the second business, if that makes any sense.
Okay.
I think one of the things that Kevin was trying to say is that the majority of his income at his current barber shop is from him personally being a barber, not from the shop, though he does make some income. While adding the second shop, Kevin can only cut so many people's hair in one day regardless of where he is, so opening a second shop doesn't mean he can make double the income. He's not going to have that added income of being a barber. So, in order to supplement that income and make it worth his time to open a second location, that's why we're requesting the liquor license.
Thank you. And thank you. Mr. Hart, you, yeah, you're very successful in town. I'm going to grant you that. You know, the restaurant that you have right now, my understanding is it's doing quite well. But you also have a successful, pretty successful restaurant in Woodstock?
Correct. I have five restaurants.
Okay. And, and I probably don't have knowledge of all of them, but I do know, Woodstock, you've been there for how many years?
Just over 10.
Okay. And DC Cops opened up, what, about a year, year and a half ago, two years?
About a year and a half ago. A year in February.
A very unique concept. I would think that, is it, is it easy to understand that being in Woodstock for 10 years, you've established some type of business relationship there and was this concept, was this thought ever brought up to the city of Woodstock officials and how would they respond to it if you had any discussions with them previously coming up to us tonight?
No, I've never discussed it with Woodstock. I own the building on Main Street, so we bought the building and then we're thinking about what we were going to do. If this doesn't get approved, we would just rent out the building rather than remodel it, redo the facade, et cetera. So, I don't have a location that I own in Woodstock that would fit this concept. You know, something on the square would be similar, but I don't own any property on the square besides my office building, and that is not conducive for this project.
Okay. I guess I'll leave my further questions for later and just proceed on. I'm out right now.
Alderman Glad?
I don't really have any questions, just basically my reservations more than anything else is the last city council meeting, we had discussions on service type liquor licenses and it didn't seem like the council cared as a cohesive group to take the forward with something like that, but yet now we've got a proposal, the things being, which is basically that. And if we approve this, we're basically opening up the doors to a lot more service-oriented businesses to request liquor licenses. And how do we say no if we start doing them in service type establishments? Although the concept seems promising. It's very unique. I still have that reservation, and I don't know, maybe it's something that we need to look at as far as, for the future, as far as curtailing something like this exploding in our faces, and I just can't see at this point in time with the way our ordinances are and everything to move forward with this type of project.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes, I have a couple comments. One is kind of personal, because that, that building is actually the reason why I've been in McHenry for the last 55 years. That was my grandfather's grocery store back in 50s, 60s, and 70s, so spent a lot of time there as a little guy. So, that's one thing, I'm very happy to see something go in there, obviously all the time, we're, as a family, very excited about that just because of the history there for our family, but and my comments too are from previous at the last meeting and beyond, but the fear that I have and the, what people have talked with me about is that I use the term non-traditional liquor license, and we're, the concern is, and I hate using cliches, but opening up the can of worms or, or doing that, we'll have somebody here tomorrow morning asking to do the same thing. So, that, that is something that's very leery for us to move forward with something like that, and I think we need to make sure we're understanding how that, how we progress with that, and I think we have to be very careful about, about that type of non-traditional establishment getting a liquor license and including gaming. I think everything that you said and everything that the mayor's brought up in his letter to us about, you know, not advertising the gaming and it's not going to be, the main business isn't there for, you know, the liquor revenue and things like that, but and I like the concept, I just, I don't know if, if McHenry's ready for that yet based on some of the feedback that I've gotten.
If I could respond to Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Glad, quickly. Good. As a former city council member in Woodstock, I understand the position you guys are in to represent the city, and how difficult that can be. I also understand that one of the great things about city councils is that you do get to consider things on a case-by-case basis. It's not an instance where if Kevin and I are granted a liquor license, suddenly anybody that comes before you is granted. One of the things about our concept that's unique is not just the concept, but that we're coming to you with an idea to remodel a building, to help kind of ignite that area of downtown, and if not approved, you know, we're going to rent out the building, but whoever goes in there is going to be a regular tenant. We're not an existing business coming before you saying, "We'd like to add alcohol and video gaming." We're saying that as a business, this is integral to the concept, and should you grant us the liquor license, we're going to do a full remodel and build a very nice space. But without the approval, obviously, we're not going to come to McHenry because we wouldn't be able to. It's part of the concept. So, I understand fully what you're saying and I sympathize with it, but I don't think it's as cut and dry as just because we're granted a liquor license that anyone, you know, else is going to expect one.
Right. I appreciate that comment too. We've been cautioned in the past from our, our city attorney too that our only course of action is via the liquor license route, so, and from a litigation standpoint, we do, I think we do have to be leery if we allow this concept, then we, it would be very difficult to say no to another one similar, I think. And maybe David might have something to add to it for us in that concept, but, because we're always told it's our liquor license
I do.
chance to make it or not.
Right, but I should clarify that. There's two issues that you're talking about. One is gaming and the other is the liquor license. So, first of all, your liquor license, you have, to get, receive a liquor license is not a right. Nobody has a right to a liquor license. It's a privilege that the city has a right to issue or not issue within your discretion. Nobody can come here and say, "I met the requirements A, B, and C, and therefore I get a liquor license." It doesn't happen. So, that's your liquor license authority. As far as gaming is concerned, yeah, once you issue a liquor license that's connected to a pour, then gaming application is out of our jurisdiction and it goes to the state. So, your best way to prevent gaming is to prevent the liquor license. It's the only way. You say, "No, we're not going to issue that liquor license." No, you know you're not going to get gaming. Those are two different issues. Don't, don't mix them because they're kind of treated differently. That's all.
I would say also that after that, you know, McHenry has video gaming parlors, and you said no to video gaming parlors after those have opened, so you could certainly say no to other people.
That's all I have for right now.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say I am so excited about this new venture, and I think it's perfect timing for the things that we're seeing happening downtown. We have a real need to revitalize the Main Street District, and having a high-end space that's going to bring high-end clients, I think, is really, really advantageous to our downtown and to the city. I'm in full support, and I think there sounds like there's some confusion, council right now, about the actual liquor license being requested. This is actually a liquor license as, just like DC Cops holds, correct? This isn't a personal care license like what we were talking about previously.
Correct.
This is a bar that does haircuts at the same time. I love it. My business partner can't wait to come.
Alderman Mahavik?
I like what you want to do with the site, you know, and I, I like the concept itself, but I have same concerns regarding non-traditional liquor licenses, as has been said before here too, which is, I think we're opening up a can of worms, as Alderman Schaefer said. For that reason, I'm having a hard time. That's all I have.
Alderman Glad?
I have some reservations about it as well, but I think the concept's good. I think it's going to work. I know later on we'll have other people come to us and with other unconditional ideas, but I, I support the project.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Well, I strongly support the project. I think your creativeness of the space and the fact that you've experienced in your trades just lends success to the opportunity. Yes, it's thinking out of the box. It's not normal. It's not what we're used to, but if we're not creative, who can be? So, I support the endeavor and hope that we can successfully put in there.
Can I kind of add to what Sue said too? And there seems to be a lot of hesitation because this is not traditional, and as an entrepreneur myself, that's what makes fantastic businesses, and that's what makes
entrepreneur myself, that's what makes fantastic businesses, and that's what makes destinations and communities. So the fact that this isn't traditional is one of the reasons people will literally come from other towns to get their hair done here. And I think as council members, it's really our responsibility to facilitate those relationships with local businesses and our residents. And, you know, again, I am in support, but I, I think we need to be cautious about being so overly cautious about anything out of the box.
Alderman Miller?
So I just wanna add to, to the conversation, that I think Alderman Mahaney hit the point when she said, "You're gonna have a bar that you can also get a haircut in." And I think that's how we have to think about this. There used to be an old barber shop down on Main Street. It was Jim McAndrew's Barber Shop. I don't know if either of you knew Jim, or many of us knew Jim. He had two barber chairs and four wood chairs, and I used to call it the old guy's club. 'Cause from the moment he opened to the moment he closed, all six chairs were full, and he was the only barber there. And I will go on the record to say there was probably a little Irish whiskey involved without a liquor license. So we know that there are people that go get their haircut and would like to take on something else. So again, history's there, and I think it could be a successful place on Main Street. So thank you.
Alderman left?
First, I'll start out with the fact that Mr. Hart, you realize you were a trustee in Woodstock, and I am an Alderman here in the city of McHenry, and I represent people just like you did in Woodstock. I wanna thank the Northwest Herald for an excellent exposé on, on what you're trying to do in the paper this morning, but generated a lot of phone calls to me from residents in my ward, that I have a lot more reservations about another liquor license in this town, and not at a traditional restaurant or pub, but in a barber shop. And I didn't have one person call me and say, "Yeah, I can't wait to go have a haircut over there while I take my dog across the street." And once they get their liquor license, if I don't have a drink there, I can watch my dog walk outside ways out of the, 'cause when I'm, I'm going to coin a phrase of an Alderman, where do we draw the line? If we give this service-oriented business a liquor license, you know they're gonna keep coming down the road, and it could be, and it'll clause and clause that you wind up with that. I mean, anybody, you never know where the next request is gonna come from. And that's why I have my reservations. And maybe it's not something that we have to approve tonight, but maybe it's something that we need to look at, is as far as looking at what the reservations of some of our council members and some of our constituents out there in the city have, and taking, and come up with something that'd be more restrictive or something, so that those reservations could be addressed, but can't be done today.
Alderman Schaefer?
Is the plan to then operate like a bar with a haircut available? So would that be the hours kinda thing, till, you know, 1:00, 2:00 AM?
No, the hours would not be that late, especially with the area currently the way it is, I wouldn't be comfortable being open that late at night. But I think as Sue said, yes, it's non-traditional, but we're a bar with a barber shop, not a barber shop asking for a liquor license. And as Mr. Glad said, Northwest Herald did run an article, and while certainly I didn't get any phone calls on it, I believe there was over a hundred comments, the majority of which were overwhelmingly positive from people in McHenry saying they were excited about the concept.
Comments I got were all very positive.
I'm gonna open up to, oh, Alderman.
Yeah, Mr. Hart, so you've got other restaurants, correct?
Correct.
I, I know Woodstock, I know McHenry, Hebron, is it, is it a restaurant, Hebron now?
It is.
And what format, style is it? Sandwich place or?
Called Hart's Saloon, it's a wood fire pizza bar restaurant.
It's a bar restaurant. You said five, I think, so I'm missing somebody?
I own the Rosati's in Harvard, and I own Claussen's Tavern in Union.
Okay, is Claussen's Tavern, is there any food served, served there, or just a bar?
We serve a little bit, yeah, oldest bar in McHenry County, it's been open since early nineteen hundreds.
And you've been successful at these facilities?
I would say so.
Okay. I know it's, you're thinking out of the box, appreciate it. You're very successful in that business, you know, did it ever come to mind about doing some kind of food and alcohol concept in that building?
There's not the room for it, and the remodel would be far too costly, because it's a multi-use building, but we have a very difficult time needing coach to put a hood in, and to be able to do anything like that. And it's not that big of a space, so the amount of space we'd have to compromise in order to do that, in addition, wouldn't be worth it. Part of our business plan is to allow Buddy's, DC Cobs, any local restaurants to be able to deliver food there, and have a small dining area set up, so if people wanna eat, they can bring in food from other local establishments.
You've, you've made the commitment to purchasing the building prior to coming in with this unique concept.
Yes.
I mean, normally, something like this, you know, ninety-nine percent of the times the contracts come back and they say, "Well, upon city approval, and why not, you know, write your agreement together to come to us prior to you making?" 'Cause you've already made the commitment, whether you have this or not, you've made the commitment to buy the building, it's yours.
Yeah, because the building right now, as it sits, already cash flows and pays the mortgage. We can leave the building vacant, and we'll be okay, or we can rent it out cheap to another tenant, just to give us a few, four, five hundred dollars a month. If the concept gets improved, we'll put a huge investment into the property, rebuilding it, cleaning it up, but the building itself already cash flows with us, so even if we're not approved tonight, I mean, that's not gonna affect the building.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I agree with you, you're getting, it would be a heck of an investment. There are definitely a lot of investments going on around town. I've walked through a couple of facilities that are, and I know there's enormous amounts of money in rehabbing, rebuilding, and buying, and purchasing some buildings in town, and they're coming from a quite successful background, and they're definitely gonna be successful, I feel they're gonna be successful in their new locations, and you see that ongoing. So, unique concept, but there's definitely some buying, some remodeling, some investments being done, you know, by, by people, and for the most part, they're doing it the way I've seen it as a, as a member, as a council member here, is that they've come in knowing that they need an approval prior, you know, to, to cut that final check and actually buy the building. Has the idea of a BYOB license thought about that? Is there any possibility like that?
We wouldn't be able to have video gaming with a BYOB license.
Exactly, exactly. And
And I follow.
Well, I, what, that's, that's my point. I mean, if you wanna come in as a, you know, as a, as a high-end, my, my original questions, you come in as a high-end at barber shop, which he is doing successfully right now in Crystal Lake, why not keep that business by the way it is right now?
Because it's not profitable enough, as we said before.
But he's success, I'm sorry, he's successful for fourteen years, that's gotta tell me there's some profit.
As a barber, I mean.
I'm, I'm an owner-operator in the business, so I work at the business.
Sure.
And I need my own income for my chair. If I were going to just keep the same business plan and go to another shop, that's just doubling my overhead for the same amount of money.
Do you also shine shoes there?
Not at my.
Do you do shoe repairs? 'Cause that's something in a letter, so that's a different concept, so that's, should bring in some income. You, you, something in a letter also brought up about letters, excuse me, leather, leather materials that you're gonna be able to repair, leather. So there's more, there's more to this than just, you know, the liquor license. I mean, you are branching out a little bit, you're gonna be doing more here.
Yeah, but we're here for approval for the liquor license.
I understand, I, I, I know what you're saying, I, I just wanna understand that there are some things in place, and you plan on attaching those to these businesses, hopefully to be, to make it part of its profit center too. I'm sure you're not gonna do something in there like shoe repairs and not charge a certain amount, where every time someone walks in with a repair, they'll walk it out, and you guys will lose money on that. Definitely gonna have some margins on that to make some profit. Makes sense?
Yes, it makes sense.
It was brought up by some of the other members, and, and I, I understand, you know, Main Street's not been the best place in town. You're right, you're right. But understand that, you know, Lau Brothers came in about five, six years ago, Cyren Records came in, Plum Garden bought more space, Mo's on Main was, I have not been in there, but it's my understanding that it's, it's, it's a beautiful place. So there are things happening, and, and I know something can be done in that building, but I, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands here that, you know, this is definitely unique, but there are some very positive things going on in that street, especially the last six to ten years. And, and, you know, I, I appreciate it, it's, it's definitely going in the right direction. It's, excuse me, this, I, I, I can't see myself being comfortable with the way it's presented tonight, because I just, you know, I, I just know we're gonna be inundated tomorrow morning, and I, I don't know if I wanna go down that road for the city of McHenry. I just, you know, and, and it's not, I'm not pointing at you, you two gentlemen directly here, I'm just saying that it's, it's, it's a situation that if it does occur, that my, my gut tells me that we're, we're having applications come in left and right, and just thinking off the top of my head, you know, if, if, if I have a business with a waiting room here in town, if I'm doing auto repair, why not offer this to them? I got an oil change, it's gonna happen in an hour. I don't know, it, it might not be my forte to do it personally, but why not offer it to the people? How about a high-end men's clothing store? Should we have a liquor license attached to that, so that when they're getting measured for their suits, and, and then they can have the gaming concept or something like that? And even to, you know, I know, I know this might be stretching a point, but I have to wait at my dentist's office, so does that mean, that's a service, should I, should we then open the door to that? I, I, 'cause it was said, I didn't take it, but I didn't, I didn't say it briefly, but I didn't say it two weeks ago, what, where do you, where do you draw the line? And, excuse me, that's all I have right now, thank you.
So to be clear, what you're saying is if we weren't gonna put a barber shop in, it was just gonna be a bar, you'd be okay with it, but because we're adding the barber component, there's an issue for you?
That does open up a certain angle there, a certain avenue, that then my, if I had a cousin in town that had a salon, I'm sure he or she would be at the front door tomorrow morning here, you know, looking to, to, you know, make their, make their business more profitable. I, I, that's what my gut tells me, Mr. Hart, I.
Well, I'm just liberating the fact that that's very different. If somebody has an existing business and wants to add a liquor license, it's very different than someone
Yeah.
willing to make an investment in the downtown area, that you might see progress coming in, but the majority of people I've talked to in town that come in my restaurants, the other council members, people I've spoken with, don't feel the same way. They feel Main Street is the forgotten downtown, that there's not much going on there. We're willing to come in, invest a significant amount of money to remodel a facade, to redo a building, to open up something that exists all over the country, but not close around here, is a destination spot to help spark a revitalization of that area of downtown, and if it's voted down, maybe somebody else someday will do something on that street, I won't be honest.
Yeah, but I hear, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hart, but it's, I mean, Lau Brothers invested lots of money to rebuild a building there, and they're an HVAC company and doing fine, okay? Mo's on Main, I, Fritz, I know, I don't know Fritz's, I apologize, I don't know his last name.
Larson.
Larson, you know, he did phenomenal job there. And you've shown me already that you can do the restaurant pub bar concept, and you walking in here to do that, I don't foresee, I, I personally don't foresee a problem with the restaurant bar concept in that building. But you've already said, you've already expressed that it's not set up, and it's really too expensive to do that, but you wanna invest it into the chairs, the bar, and leather repair area or something like that.
Yeah, we wanna bring something to town that's not here, that's not in any surrounding towns, it's a destination to bring in tourism, to bring people into town to see other places, and create jobs.
No, I, I, I appreciate your comments, thank you, Mr. Hart, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
So before we go to public comment, I'd like to actually say a few things, which I normally don't talk about, action items here, but obviously you know how I feel about this item. I, you know, this, this is a unique business opportunity. Having Dan Hart involved on Main Street just in general would be huge, along with Fritz, Larson, along with Jason at Plum Garden, having people that have a vision to help us revitalize Main Street. Main Street is one of those forgotten downtowns, I will, I will admit to that, it's, it's a tough downtown. If someone's willing to come in and spend hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars on a facade and invest their hard-earned money into a business like this, I strongly are just to support something like that. I think it's, you know, so, you know, other mayors, one hundred percent, would probably be calling you tomorrow saying, "Hey, we want you in our town, we want a destination like this, a unique business, we welcome you here." I don't want that. We want them, we wanna welcome every business here with unique opportunities. I, I, you know, Dan's very involved in, in Green Street, look at Green Street. I go to Dan for a lot of things, on, on visions and stuff like that, 'cause he's got a vision for certain things, you know, that he's very good at. Having him on Main Street would not be just him in that one business, he would be helping revitalize the entire area. And Fritz too, you know Fritz Larson very well, they would partner to help, to make their business even better. So that's all I have to say for that, so. I'll go to public comment, if you two wanna have a seat. Is there anyone in public?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in public that'd like to make a public comment on this item? Please state your name and address for public record.
Mary Mahady, 207 North Creek Side Trail. And I have some prepared remarks, but I have to tell you that I'm a little more confused now that I've been here tonight. I'm not sure if it's a bar that will be cutting hair, or, or a barber shop that serves alcohol and has gaming machines. It's been billed as the upscale barber shop, so my comments are based on that. And I'm not sure, in this case, what the upscale definition refers to, or why that would make any difference in whether or not a liquor license is approved for this barber shop, any more than it would be for any other similar type of business like Great Clips. I'm not against alcohol or gaming machines, but I am concerned that more and more businesses want to have the gaming machines, which of course means they have to have a liquor license. So where do we draw the line? Is this going to be approved? If this is going to be approved for this business, what would prevent every other hair salon, barber shop, nail salon, or any other business from coming in to apply for their liquor license and gaming machine applications? If you allow it at one, how can you deny it to similar businesses? Is every business a possible bar and gaming location? It just seems that businesses that you would never connect to serving alcohol or having gaming machines, as in a barber shop, they now want to. And I'm curious if there's a written criteria that spells out what businesses the city will consider eligible to apply for this type of liquor license? Or is it a case-by-case application? I do understand the desire to fill the vacant storefronts in town. I understand the taxed revenue that can be created and the boost having occupied storefronts gives to our property tax base. But I also understand, and I also understand a business owner wanting to get in on the profit from the gaming machines that help keep the doors open. But this is, but is this the only way that we can attract businesses to McHenry? Is that what we want to see in every business in town? Again, I'm not saying that we need to get rid of all the machines, but I am asking for some common sense limitations in the type of businesses that the city will allow to participate in this practice. As you consider this request, please remember that once the door is open, it may be very difficult to close. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address for public record, please.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Ziebel. My address is 2916 KMA Avenue in McHenry, and I am the owner of 3402 West Elm Street, right on 120, and I'm sure you've all seen it being remodeled, and I am And, I am also the owner of Valerie Salon and vows two, two salons that I have right next to Stefan's Jewelers and Addison Steakhouse. And, um, I did submit a request for a liquor license without a gaming license. However, this is a fantastic idea. I don't want gaming, but I don't care if he does. Thinking outside the box is exactly that. For me to be an entrepreneur and to take my hard-earned money and all my savings and throw it in, that's what makes me an entrepreneur, not the person that's complaining about the liquor license. They're not even my customer, because I can tell you, we see, I have sixteen people on staff, you can't imagine the excitement, that people are like, "Oh, my gosh, it would be so cool if I could have a, uh..." wedding merry with my, with my mom and daughter, you know, that, that day. Or we have, um, wedding parties that come in, and it would be nice to, to put a spread out for them, so that they could enjoy their time and make memories together. And I also think, uh, I watched two weeks ago, and what I found very interesting, and, and I appreciate Mr. Sandy came in and to see my place, to see what it was all about. And I just wanted to say, I, without, I don't wanna sound insulting or anything, but when you're not in our business, it would be like me trying to come and tell you how you should be mayor, or, or how you should do your marketing business. You know, I, I just couldn't do it, you know? And when I listened to what Algonquin, what, what was said last time about Algonquin's license and that they had to have four services, that was, in my opinion, a totally uneducated ordinance or statute that they put in place for something they know nothing about, because I can do four services in ten minutes. So, I'm just saying, I, I was, I came tonight because if you had any questions, I would love to educate you to the fact of what our clientele base is like. And I am an upscale salon, and you could see that, we are the nicest salon in McHenry, and plan to be even nicer. I mean, we have three stories of a beautiful spa that's going in. Do I need liquor? No, I've been in business for thirty years in this town, and I will say, I didn't know it was illegal to give away liquor in the past. But I don't do that anymore, because I can't. It would put me out of business with sixteen people on staff that work there. That, sometimes we see over a hundred people a day, I mean, there's no way that that could happen. And the other point of it is, do I need this to be successful? Not at all. This is, is what sets me apart. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. This is why my customers come to me, because we are the best at what we do, end of story. And if they wanna, you... Our, our customers are our client, are, are friends, you know? We hang out and talk about everything. I mean, it's just unreal, and to be able to enjoy a few moments with somebody that comes in after work, I mean, that's just awesome. So, and we have workers on staff. You know, it doesn't matter who works there. You know, there's sixteen licensed people there that, um, are very excited about this, and so are our clients, and I would just really urge you to think out of the box, if you will, or whatever it might be, this is coming closer and closer and closer, and you hit it on the head, someone else is gonna pick this up right next door, and now, you know, we missed the boat. So, and you have the right, I mean, you're the council. You know, if you can do an ordinance for me, great. If you can grant it to them, great. I, you know, I don't need the gaming, don't care about it. I just wanna be able to elevate my clients' experience with a touch of class and a little pampering, and that's all, that's all I'm asking for. One more point. Did you know that only two out of ten salons is even successful? How, you know, if you do a, a gaming, you know, with, with the liquor, I can, I can see what you're saying. For me, no gaming ordinance, however it could work out, I would be very appreciative, but only two out of ten salons even make, they can't afford to come here and ask you for liquor, they can't even pay for stuff. I mean, it's, it's unreal. If, if the research was done here on the council, at how successful salons are, there aren't many. There just aren't many. So I, I just beg you to consider the options. Uh, I appreciate your time, and that you read my letter that I sent, and, you know, I, I worked here thirty years, invested so much, and it's, this is my dream. I am the entrepreneur bringing this to our community. And for as many people as you, you get that might call you on the phone, which, by the way, I think that's your job to take those calls. Um, there's gonna be twice as many that I can come up with that'll say, "We want it." So, it's like who's gonna blow the lawnmower, you know? So, that's all, all I really have to say.
Thank you, Val. Sorry, you got anything?
He's good.
He's good?
I just said, I was...
He's here for support.
I just, yes, for my husband. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions for Val? No? I just wanna say, Val, thank you for reinvesting in the community. Uh, I hear nothing but positive reviews of your place, so, and it's exciting to get you right on 120 in the downtown district, so that's awesome, so.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment on this item? I see none. At this time, I'm going back to council, uh, for a motion to approve the issuance of a Class A liquor license to Whiskey Straight LLC located at 3932 Main Street, McHenry, Illinois. Alderman, Bany?
Will make that motion to approve that.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Alderman Miller? Thank you. Discussion? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just, you know, you sit here and you think about this, and here we are talking about liquor, and we don't wanna have video gaming expanded, we don't necessarily wanna see too much more liquor, I don't think, expanded in this town. We already have a reputation of having quite a few bars, and definitely the highest as far as video gaming. And, and what's gonna happen with the other types of gambling that the, the state's talking because they're looking for more revenue, and the marijuana and everything else? There's gonna be a lot of tough issues like this. We say yes on a lot of them, because it sounds great, and, uh, it's benefi- beneficial for certain businesses, uh, you know? Again, you're gonna just open up the Pandora's Box on everything, so, that's all I have.
Alderman, none?
I just wanna reiterate Mr. McArdle's thoughts, that this is a privilege, not a right, and we as council have every opportunity to evaluate the ask. And, in this case, to support the motion on the floor, we have two entrepreneurs that have proved very successful, they have proved the ability to manage and promote their businesses in a positive light, they have invested in our community as well as others, and I think their ask should be rewarded with an affirmative vote. Um, it is a privilege to offer a liquor license to those people who are worthy of it, and these gentlemen have proved through their experience and their businesses that they deserve this. So, it would be my encourage to support the effort.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Alderman Schaefer?
Yeah, I think bottom line, the, what it comes down to, and I think what the council or some of the council are struggling with is the fact that we have, it boils down to the gaming side. I think, um, we have the most gaming in McHenry County, in the city of McHenry. We have the most gaming in Northern Illinois, probably, in McHenry County. One of the calls I got was from an existing bar that didn't wanna see more gaming. When we first established gaming and brought it on, was because we wanted to help those establishments that were struggling. And now, they're saying, "Well, thank you, but we have way too much, that's gonna take away from my gaming play."
That's fair.
And, and I don't know if anybody else heard that? I argued the point, saying that I don't think, you know, you know, that this will, this particular establishment will affect your, your, your gaming, uh, business, but, um, the fact is their gaming business has gone down with, with each and every gaming establishment that we've approved, so, um, I can't argue that fact. I, I, I love Ms. Ziebel's comments about she's not in it for the gaming, which is, is great, but the minute we do establish a liquor license, that, that does open it up for gaming. So that's a tough decision too, that we have to make, so, um, uh, I, I think bottom line, that's what it boils down to. We have, people talking about way too much gaming, and when are we gonna stop all the gaming? And, and that's, that's the hard decision we have to make, and entrepreneurs are growing, it's what we want, but it, does nine out of ten entrepreneurs or people looking to bring the business in ask you for gaming as part of their plan? Probably, it's close to that, maybe? So I think that's what we have to consider, that's all I have.
I just wanna mention, we talk about reputations, and everybody's so concerned about gaming, I think that Mr. Hart said there would be no signs, so unless, unless you're inside that business, I don't see what the gaming's affecting anybody. I also don't think it's our job to mitigate competition with gaming, that isn't our responsibility here, our responsibility is to approve worthy applicants of, um, liquor licenses. I'm, there, we don't approve any other business that comes in here to compete with an existing business, and I don't think we should be considering that, um, whatsoever, in whether we approve other liquor licenses or gaming opportunities. And as far as the reputation goes, I'm, I'm truly concerned about what our business community's gonna be thinking about the decisions that this council's making, and the support that the city's going to get in the future, when we seem to be, you know, very, very close-minded to entrepreneurial opportunities coming into this community. And, and I've seen it over and over again, and it truly concerns me, we get that reputation, and the city goes down. Because these businesses, Crystal Lake would love to have a business like that, I'm sure Woodstock Square would love to have a business like that, and they will go other places, and we will pay the price. And let's not forget the half a million dollars that gaming actually brings to the community that we absolutely need to have.
Right. And that's what I was gonna say, I mean, I am against gaming, actually, I've been very clear, social media and everything, I am against it. I don't like gaming, um, but with unique opportunities, I think that's doable. I think, you know, not having the signage, I hate the signage, um, that's something that hopefully one day we'll look at and, you know, eliminate the, the flying banners that are at one of the locations that I saw recently. I'm not a fan of that, you know, it makes your community, uh... Yeah, I'll just keep it at that. Um, but, competition, I mean, you know, of course, I mean, if there's a, you know, another company coming, coming into town that's the same company, or, you know, whether it's plumbing or, I mean, they're gonna complain about the, you know, the competition, that's a good thing, competition only makes people better. And I think this, uh, obviously, this unique opportunity, I think the gaming is, is something that is needed to put the kind of money into this property, um, so. Alderman Glab?
Yeah, it's like a duck, it's a duck, right? Basically, uh, you know, we've had this discussion in the past about video gaming, and that's the fact that this business wouldn't exist without video gaming. It would not be opening up an establishment without the video gaming. And, um, that's been one of the concerns, uh, right from the get-go when we first approved video gaming, and we had all the, uh, the Stella's and the little places like that that opened up. Um, this is basically a business that we would be approving, that, again, has video gaming, and it's basically a video gaming, uh, establishment, more than anything else, no matter how it looks on the outside, it's still a video gaming establishment. And, that's a concern to me. And it's a concern to a lot of my constituents, like I said, I, I had four or five people call me today, just from that article, just today. And, uh, you know, that's what we're sitting up here for, I mean, it wasn't Mr. Hart, it wasn't, uh, you know, any of the business owners that, that voted us in, unless they were a registered voter in, in each individual ward. And it's those people that elected us to look out for their best interests, and when they start telling me that they don't feel that that's their best interest, that's why I have to feel and, and vote the way I vote.
Alderman Schaefer? Dan, would you like to say something?
I can tell you for absolute fact, we would not have opened DC Gobs and remodeled the old theater without video gaming. None of the new restaurants that came to town, including Fitz's and Mo's, would have come to town without video gaming. So by your logic, you would have no new restaurants, no new bars opening, because none of them would come to the community without video gaming. That's the reason Crystal Lake got pressure and eventually passed video gaming, because people weren't opening new establishments. So by that logic, any place that come into town is based on video gaming.
People come into a town, and they will open up a business due to what kinda competition. And if there's competition, if there isn't the type of competition and the type of restaurants and businesses they open up, they may, they may open up.
I'm basing it as an entrepreneur owns five restaurants.
And I'm not gonna give an argument back and forth about business, because, okay, you have a business background of, uh, several years in the restaurant business, I have probably forty-eight years of retail business.
Okay, so I won't tell you about retail, I won't tell you about restaurants.
Totally different, totally different, yes, exactly, it's totally different. But, again, I have to look at what I feel, uh, in my gut, plus what residents in my area are telling me, and that's what I hear. I haven't heard one person call up and say, "Oh, you know, it's great, you know, it, it sounds like a great concept." I had a, a small group discussion, uh, with several people, uh, for breakfast this morning, and none of them felt it was, uh, a good idea either, and, uh, a lot of eyes rolling and everything else, like, how could they even think about it? So, it's great for you as far as a business person, and, and you got a great business plan and everything else, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the community wants it, uh, at least not the residents that I have, have talked to.
I don't know what the resident said to you, I'm just commenting on your, responding to your comment, that it's a video gaming establishment, and informing you that DC Gobs, as the owner, I'm telling you, for effect, would not have opened in McHenry, would not have remodeled the old theater, would not have built a rooftop, a patio, would not be supporting events as the headline sponsor like Blue Brews and Barbecues, we would have gone to a different town.
You remodeled the old movie theater?
It wouldn't have happened without DC Gobs.
Oh, without DC Gobs, maybe it would have been another restaurant tour, possibility. You know, the thing is, is, have we come to a, a time in, uh, in everybody's life that no business exists without gambling? That's pretty much what you're saying.
It's not what I'm saying at all.
What you're saying is, is you can't exist a business in McHenry or anywhere else, nobody's gonna go anywhere and open up a business and invest unless they have video gaming.
No, he didn't.
Look, that's pretty much what he's implying.
I didn't even remotely imply that. I said, "I would not have opened DC Gobs."
Point of order, point of order here. Mayor, uh, I add that the floor, I don't need to hear comments from other council members until they raise their hand, and I, I don't really wanna think that we need to get into a...
Logical discussion.
Back and forth, as far as, uh, an argument between the petition or not. I think what he's had to say, he said, what I have to, have said, I've said. And I'd like to just close the door on that. If somebody else would like to say something.
Any other comments? Alderman Schaefer?
I just wanted to point out the fact that I mentioned the call I received from another businessman, that's a statement of fact, not that competition is bad in any way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Clerk, please call it off.
I'm sorry. Maybe I'm surprised.
Yeah, yeah, you thought we were gonna be here for a half an hour or so. Alderman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
No.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
No.
Alderman Mahavik?
No.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Please, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion to approve and authorize the execution of a development agreement and release of letter of credit and annexation agreement obligations between the city of McHenry and View and Sand and Gravel Incorporated. Attorney McArdle?
Everybody could turn their, their agenda supplements to the development agreement and release, that you have proposed development agreement and release agreement. Also, I'm passing out some, uh, diagrams here, or maps, or whatever they are. And I, I, I need to explain this to you, because it's relatively complicated, so I'll give you a little bit of background with the drawings to orient you, and then I'll explain what the proposal is. So if you can take the drawings that I gave, and turn to the third page, this is a drawing of the intersection of Veterans Acres and aisle thirty-one, and the property at the northeast corner, which is outlined in orange, top, I don't, top, I don't come up. This is the property that's owned by the Prairie Point Land Development Corporation. It's an LLC. You know, it's thirty-eight acres, the white building to the east area is the former family service building, to give you some orientation. And then, of course, it's the intersection of Veterans... Veterans Parkway Route 31. This property used to be owned originally in the early two thousands by Concord. Concord signed an annexation agreement regarding this property and the surrounding property that developer transferred it. The next successor became Lennar. Lennar had some business relationship with other individuals in the City of McHenry and with the Thielen Sand and Gravel people. And Tom Zankia represents both the Prairie Point LLC, the owner of this property, and Thielen Sand and Gravel, which I'll explain their relationship in a little bit. So when Concord signed its annexation agreement, it agreed to do all the development improvements onsite, call those the onsite improvements. And it also had the obligation to install a bike path along Veterans Parkway, a sidewalk along Veterans Parkway, and traffic signals at the intersection of Veterans and Route 31. When the property was transferred to Lennar and its business associates, Lennar signed, issued two letters, two letters of credits, one letter of credit to secure the onsite improvements, and one letter of credit to secure the bike path, the asphalt, or the bike path, the sidewalk, and the traffic signal. One was for four hundred thousand dollars, being the traffic signal and et cetera, and the other was five hundred thousand dollars and change for the onsite improvements. That was like in two thousand fifteen or so, maybe two thousand eleven. Since then, there was a developer that came to the city of this thirty-eight acre parcel, a sophisticated developer. When that developer came to the city, discussions ensued between both the city and the owner of that property, which was the Lennar Group. And a dispute ensued between those owners of that thirty-eight acre parcel. The developer went away. And out of all of that, all of those issues swirling around a few years ago, Thielen Sand and Gravel, sorry, who issued, who signed their letters of credit? I can't remember. Was it Thielen or Prairie Point?
Prairie Point did sign it. Thielen Sand and Gravel was the guarantor.
They were just the guarantor of it. So Thi, so Prairie Point had two, two letters. Prairie Point LLC took over both letters of credit from Lennar a few years ago. And those letters of credit are still good today. We are guaranteed to get the traffic signal, the bike path, and the sidewalk installed, improved, and installed when traffic warrants are met on Route 31. They're still not there today because warrants aren't met. They also secured the onsite improvements for the five hundred thousand dollars. Guaranteeing one of those letters of credit was Thielen Sand and Gravel. Thielen Sand and, okay, so that's the end of that story. Thielen Sand and Gravel is the guarantor on the letters of credit, and Prairie Point LLC, which is a land holding LLC, just with this property, issued the, had the, had the letters of credit issued by American Community Bank. So the city's in good shape on both those securities through two thousand twenty-three. The annexation of Concord's agreement, the annex expires in two thousand twenty-three. At that point in time, everything will be released, and if there's no improvements, they'll no longer be secured. That's all foundational information. On the other hand, on the other pictures, the City of McHenry on page one, as you know, is in the process of dredging the Boone Creek Lagoon from the mouth of the Fox, the river at the Fox Waterway westbound to Green Street. That dredging project is commenced between the city and the Fox Waterway Agency. The city has to dread, remove that dredged material on its own, its own obligation. And Thielen, on the next page, Thielen Dump Site, which is east of us in Lakewood, most of you are familiar with that. Thielen has a dump site which would be a convenient place to deposit this material. Thielen has offered to, has offered in it, at an attractive rate, at an attractive dump rate, to bring all of our, the entire amount, twenty thousand cubic yards of material from page one to page two and deposit it. And we're doing that as we speak at an agreed upon rate. So now we're going to the agreement. I want to walk you through the agreement a little bit. This is the development agreement that's in your baggage. I'm gonna skip the recitals because I've already got all of those with you just now. This is the agreement that's before you. And if you go to paragraph one, if you don't have it, I'll outline it a little bit. Paragraph one says that the developer, the Prairie Point LLC, and Thielen on one of those guarantors, would like to be released from their letter of credit obligations completely. Okay. In consideration of being released for those letters of credit, paragraph number two, Thielen Sand and Gravel will allow our twenty thousand cubic yards of dredged material to be trucked and deposited at their site for ten dollars per truckload for the first five hundred trucks, twenty dollars per truckload thereafter, up to twenty thousand cubic yards. The going rate for that is more than ten times. It's over a hundred dollars per truckload. Am I right about that, Dan? Yeah. So that that was their offer. Paragraph number three is the guts of where we go forward since we lost our security for those improvements. So the LLC, which again is just a land holding LLC, is assuming the obligations for both the bike path, sidewalk, and traffic light on the, on the one hand, and they're assuming the obligations for the onsite improvements by signing this agreement. They promised that they'll get those improvements done timely and completely. To secure that improvement per those agreements, they're agreeing that no building permits can be issued on the thirty-eight acres until those improvements are completed or a letter of credit is issued. Okay? So we're gonna hold those building permits until those improvements are completed. So the question becomes, what happens if traffic warrants are met before they want building permits, right? There's more traction at that intersection for some reason without that corner being developed. So that's paragraph number four. And the event traffic warrants are not met, I mean, are met at the intersection before any building permits are needed, at that point in time, the LLC has agreed, they will then issue the same two letters of credits in the same amounts, five hundred thousand for the onsite improvements, four hundred thousand for the
Stoplight, you're right. For the stoplight.
For the stoplight and the bike path and this sidewalk. Paragraph five says the promises run with the land and the event they should sell it. And that's all I have. So it appears that we're giving up a million dollars worth of security for twenty thousand cubic yards at a discounted rate, which is the deal. But don't forget that the million dollars of collateral is gonna be extinguished in two thousand twenty-three. So you have to ask yourself, what are the odds of traffic warrants being met by then? And what are the odds that the traffic warrants are gonna be required because building permits are gonna be needed at this particular site because there's a buyer, at which point it will all become moot because they'll then make those improvements? We can't predict any of that, but that is the situation. And the only reason we're in a better position today on those letters of credit is because Thielen guaranteed these letters of credit in two thousand fifteen when that developer said it was interested in that property and then fell through. Thielen signed that, those letters of credit a little too quickly. If they didn't sign those, we would not be in a position where they just happened to sign those letters of credit. But again, nothing's happening at that area to suggest traffic warrants are being met.
And in two thousand fifteen, that's when there was a medical, you may have recalled, there was a, a medical manufacturer that was very interested in citing the entire thirty-eight acres.
Yeah, just they never quite made it to the open session here, that kind of thing.
Okay. Questions? Any questions, comments by Council? Alvin Mehavik?
Could you explain again the entity that owns the property now? It's Prairie Point Land Development Corp. in Illinois Corporation. Is that the
LLC.
The owner?
LLC.
Says Corp.
Corp, sorry, Corp.
But that's the the owner of the property?
Yeah, the whole title.
That's the title owner?
Correct.
Yes.
Corporation.
Okay. It is. And it only has one asset, the real estate.
Correct.
And the letters of credit, as you explained, they're expiring in two thousand twenty-three regardless, right?
They're expiring because of the annexation. Agreement is expiring. They'll
But they expire regardless of twenty-three.
Once that happens, I'm sorry, Alvin Santi, once that happens, everything with this agreement dissolves.
All right.
The path, the warrants for the stoplight.
And the signals.
And the signals.
Right. You'll notice on this page three, there's a vacant property to the east of Family Services Building, or the old Family Services Building.
Yeah.
That, that property isn't even making any contributions to that intersection because, well, I don't know who owns that, that might. Is that subject to the annexation agreement still? That that part vacant parcel?
I don't believe so. I don't, I don't think that was part, I don't think that was part of the parcel of the annexation.
My, my point is that there's nobody behind, nobody's promised to put up those signals at this point down the road east. You know, there, there was another developer who took out Coonats Development. They're not contributing.
No, David, the Town and Country originally did contribute a hundred thousand towards the signal.
Is that Coonats Development?
No, that, that was originally Town and Country.
Or Town and Country, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, okay. So, all right, so there is a contribution in the bank.
Okay, is that land just east of that building? Does Town and Country have possibly some option there right now, or in regards to that land, if they're
I believe it's owned by Hubstone.
Right, it still is owned by Hubstone. It's not planted yet. It's just, so, I mean, they're, they could potentially move across the street if they're successful. It was originally part of the Oaks of Iris Prairie subdivision, but the southern half of the subdivision was sold off, and Hubstone still owns. Who was part of Town and Country? Is that correct? Am I correct?
Town and Country is part of Hubstone.
Right, so they still own the north, the northern half of that. North of Veterans, to the east of the building. And its own residential.
But your property you're describing is, is, is east of this property, right? Or is that, that's what you're telling us right now? That's, 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 that's the property? Because I'm a little bit confused, because there's more land over here to the east that I believe is, is the potential of them building if they continue to be successful.
Yeah, so from the east of that building.
Family Services.
Family Services Building, moving east to Bearville Road or Green Street, whichever you prefer. That's all owned by Hubstone.
It is.
That's all Oaks and Iris Prairie.
Oaks and Iris Prairie, original subdivision.
Subdivision, yeah. Hubstone slash
Town and Country.
Town and Country. Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that's, okay.
Just so I'm not confused by Alderman Santi's question, that, that area to the east, you said already contributed towards the stoplight, so that's in the bank?
Originally, we had an annexation agreement with that, and we did a, there was a study done when that annexation agreement was done, they contributed, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars.
So it's not, is, is that important for this conversation?
Yeah, well, do we lose that a hundred thousand dollars?
No, we have, we have.
Yeah, we have. We have.
Okay. So I just want to understand. Thank you. Any other questions by Council?
I just have one question. Is Thielen gonna take this material regardless? Like, if they were to, I think, have they taken it yet?
Yes.
Okay.
We were under the gun because whether
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, sometimes the EPA is involved in being a lot of the box. You don't know what they, they're just curious if they're taking it no matter what.
And it's been tested, too.
Yeah.
Alvin.
Yeah, not the type that likes to gamble like that, but when we're talking to annexation agreements, it's only gonna last four years, or less than four years, maybe. Even with a little bit of incentive on the residential development over there, it's, it's gonna take four years by the time, you know, all that stuff formulates and we move forward. So, you know, a lot of people took a lot of hits with the down, the economy and everything else. Unfortunately, for us, we may have to take a few hits here and there, but at least we're looking at a benefit in another direction with saving money on the dredging. So I can, I can understand where we're coming from. I can understand that we might be better off with, with the savings, at least of some nature.
Alvin Schaefer?
Any idea how many trucks have gone already? Anybody?
Bill, we were over around twenty-five thirty a day. The volume we're doing, at least, we've been doing it for two weeks now, right? Two, two and a half weeks?
That's about right. So there'll be ten days, so it's two hundred fifty trucks. And how many total are there gonna be?
I would say we're over a third of the way done. Using, you know, we're way ahead of where we, where Fox Waterway projected us to be, and that's strictly because of the relationship that we've been able to foster here and run trucks nonstop in a location that they can dump and not have to worry about it. The first, the first three days, four days, we were taking it down to the South West Water Treatment Plant where we did the dredging oils for the boat launch. That would have ran out of space fairly quickly, and it would have just mired us. There was, there'd be no getting into that site. Trucks would have been able to run nonstop. At this pace that we're going right now, it'd be realistic to be done in a month and a half. One initial projections, maybe, maybe two months. Initial projections didn't have us done until October. But so it's been, it's run, run very smoothly.
It'll be about fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred truckloads.
That's what I was gonna ask. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna blow away that five hundred trucks at ten bucks this week, right?
At least within two weeks.
That was where I was asking. Thank you.
Alvin.
Do we know how many cubic yards we're talking about in each truck?
It comes out.
We've got a seat of twenty thousand cubic yards.
So it comes out wet at anywhere between ten and twenty. So it's really, it's tough to answer your question because a lot of it is based upon how much moisture is getting thrown into the truck. More moisture, less real material that's in there.
So the first five hundred trucks could possibly be half of that, that twenty thousand cubic?
No.
First five hundred trucks could?
I don't know. That won't cover that kind of value. I mean, it's wet, but it's, 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 there's some loads that are about fifty-fifty when we're getting them. So it'll be close to the number I had projected in my sheet. If you vary by a hundred and fifty, two hundred loads, that'll be a big difference. Because you're not effectively drying the material, loading on the barge, taking it from the barge, loading directly to the truck. So you're getting pretty high moisture contents.
Questions by Council? Done. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment on this item? I see none. I'm looking for a motion for item seven C as presented. Alderman Mehavik?
I'll take that motion.
Seconded by Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the room. Alderman Mehavik?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda, next item on the agenda is discussion. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Next item on the, is discussion to approve and authorize the execution of a letter of intent with Leopardo Companies Incorporated for the completion of a capital program audit and identify cost savings and reinvestment to, to address the city's capital improvement and equipment needs. Director Palarecki, you might, you want to sign for?
Thank you, Mayor. Purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to consider authorizing the execution of a letter of intent with Leopardo Companies Incorporated for the completion of a capital program investment grade audit to identify opportunities for cost reductions, cost savings and reinvestment as, cost savings and reinvestment as an opportunity to address the city's capital improvement and capital equipment needs. Two items of importance should be noted. First, that the completion of this audit itself is at no cost to the City of McHenry. Leopardo guarantees that they will develop a budget that is cost neutral or better for implementation. If the city chooses not to implement the development program, only then is the city obligated to pay Leopardo fifty thousand dollars for reimbursement of services. If, however, the program is implemented, Leopardo will serve as the city's general contractor for the implementation of identified improvements through a guaranteed performance contract. So Leopardo is actually, their team is here to give a small presentation. So Leopardal is actually, their team is here to give a small presentation, and then, uh, you all, all of the staff here, the directors of work with Leopardal over the past couple of months, uh, and we're here to answer any questions for you. So I'll introduce, well, these gentlemen can introduce. This is Rob, this is Rob, and then you can introduce his team.
And I didn't get the blue suit, so. Is there a way to control the screen?
You just, you give me a?
You just yell at him.
I'm here for you.
All right. I like it, I like it. Um, first off, we just wanted to say thank you, uh, we're excited to present our capital creation strategies to all you aldermen and alderwomen tonight. Uh, we've been working with the administration for, in fact, we worked with them back in January of two thousand and eighteen, so we've been working closely with them, and we really appreciate all the help and support they provide us, because we're only as good as the information that is provided to us. This is very informal, so please, if you have any questions at any moment, just interrupt us and ask away. Uh, the agenda tonight, we just, we're going to go over some findings that, uh, we have identified for you, uh, to, that's for us to, to reduce costs. We've got a find, or, sorry. I was, yeah, I was talking with my kids, not actually, we gotta work on this. But yeah, we, uh, we've got our, uh, financial overview, as well as we have, uh, some traditional construction versus our capital creation strategies. We've got a cost of delay, uh, measurement verification profile, I'm going to talk about next steps. Uh, so if you go to the next slide.
Might pass those out? Do you want to pass those out? I have physical copies, if you guys?
We have.
We have them.
You have them?
It's the same thing that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you rather have the book?
I'd rather, I'd prefer the book, please.
Anybody else? Thank you.
I'm Rob Polareff, I'm the Chiefness Officer for our unit. This is Drake Wallers, he's our Vice President of Energy Engineering. He's responsible for all the calculations, just to be aware of where Joe McHenry is, he's our Director of Operations, uh, he owns his, uh, construction engineering program. AJ, where is my Director of Heat Relations, just in the future, I can go and play along. I'm kidding, he's, uh, he's my cousin.
He's actually not going to go.
And then, uh, some of you guys might know, uh, Mike, Mike's one of our senior project managers, and, uh, if this thing moves forward, he would be the Senior Project Manager overseeing this program.
Good evening, I just wanted to elaborate maybe, uh, why I'm here. Normally, I'm a senior PM for the company, and if something like this takes off, they grab us and we take off and run the project. Normally, we're not engaged this early in the process, these guys do a lot of the upfront due diligence. But I got wind, they were working with McHenry, talking to McHenry, so I kind of jumped in and said, hey, you know, that's my area, I'd like to be involved. So they have done all the homework, uh, Rob's got like an hour and a half presentation here for you. But I just want everybody to know that if this does move forward, I've, uh, spent some time learning about it myself. Um, it is a good opportunity, I think it is a good fit for McHenry, and if it does proceed, I'm the kind of main contact, so all you people who may be upset or really happy, hopefully happy, you can come talk to me, but, um, I just wanted to say that I'm really supportive of it, and it seems like a really good fit for McHenry. I've been here my whole life, and have been involved with a couple of businesses, and I think it's a good fit, so just wanted to make everybody aware of my involvement. Thank you.
And then, uh, Justin Dzerzky, he's back here, he was instrumental in helping with the fleet program together, and then Kristen Haas, uh, is our Director of Fleet Operations, so if there's any specific questions about that, he can answer those as we start getting through the presentation. If you go to the next slide, um, so capital creation strategies, we've had a lot of success helping municipalities significantly reduce, uh, utility operating expenses, and then we turn those operating expense reductions into capital that can be used to address your, uh, building infrastructure needs. Unless you're unique, most of the cities that we work with don't have enough capital to address all the capital needs that are inside the facilities. So this is a very popular procurement vehicle to allow for these improvements to be made, where the savings from the improvements, paid for the improvements, and we as the contractor guarantee the cost, we guarantee the savings, and we guarantee the performance. So all the risk in this world shifts over to the contractor, which is us, so that if anything goes wrong, it's on our dime. Does that make sense? Now I'm going to turn over to Joe and Drake to talk specific nuts and bolts on what we found here inside of our building infrastructure.
As Rob discussed with the needs, uh, this slide kind of shows some of the major needs we're looking to address with this program. A roof at City Hall and, uh, the Aquatic Center, uh, replacing that, replacing windows at Public Works. Failing HVAC equipment throughout various buildings in the city, we would be addressing that, and, and some of the older technology, lighting, we would be upgrading that to more efficient LED. Um, on, on the operations side, specifically the fleet, uh, some of the, uh, data that we evaluated in our analysis, um, a couple items stood out to us. So half of the city's fleet were, um, fifty-four vehicles that are over ten years old. The replacement cost of that, uh, group of vehicles is over four million dollars, and the current fleet maintenance spend is over four hundred thousand dollars annually. And, uh, you know, Rob will go through a little bit more detail on, um, what impact that's going to have on the city and how we can address that.
Yeah, so just a little bit about the savings, when we, we approach these feasibility studies, we go by two angles. What's the greatest infrastructure need for the city, what's the big laundry list of items that need to be done, and how to, how to pay for them, what's the biggest opportunities for savings? And in our feasibility study, when we presented to you in December, we identified through facility upgrades, there's significant utility savings, as well as savings to do possibly solar, uncertain certain properties, West Water Treatment Plant. Operational savings for your buildings, such as building maintenance and IT upgrades, by reducing your existing costs and your IT bills, as well as your building payments by installing new equipment. And we identified a significant amount of savings and operations through fleet, specifically with parts, and, and as much you spent for parts and supplies for your vehicles through a leasing program and through fleet fuel upgrades.
Yeah, so we spent a lot of time analyzing the fleet here. You have a hundred and seven vehicles, and as Joe mentioned, over, over half of them, or fifty-one percent, are ten years of age or older. So what you see when you start getting a fleet that starts getting aged, it's like everything has a useful life, and you start accumulating more costs. So that number here, that four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven, that's just the material supply costs, that's not labor or anything associated with people. That's just the parts and supplies that are used to keep the vehicles functional and operational, uh, which is a significant expense, uh, when you consider the amount of vehicles that you have. Another thing we looked at, we did an exercise, if you were to replace the entire fleet, you've got over six point seven million dollars in, uh, replacement costs associated with your vehicles. So that's truly the value of the, the total fleet that was replaced. So you guys have a significant fleet in terms of what you're managing. So if you go to the next slide, which is slide seven, this is a breakdown of what has been requested and what has been approved over the last six years that we were able to receive from the administration. So this goes back from the fourteen, fifteen year, all the way up to current, and it just shows in the general fund, the number of, the amount of vehicles that were requested over that six-year period, which totals, the six-year total is a little over five point six million dollars. What was actually approved was five hundred and eighty-one thousand, or ten percent of the ask. So what happens when you delay the investment, the more, the, the more the expenses associated with operating the vehicle, then you get to a point where if it's unable to continue to operate, it, you deal with catastrophic failures, it's a lot more expensive to replace things on emergency. So what we looked at was a proactive acquisition strategy that will allow you to lean in to these expenses, so it can be more affordable while reducing your, uh, material supply costs at the same time without over leveraging you. So that's really the strategy with, uh, the leasing program. The, underneath here, the enterprise fund, it's been a little better funded, so over that same six-year period, there was two point four million in asks, and there was, uh, a little over a million granted, or forty-four percent. So overall, over the last six years, twenty percent of the, uh, budgeted, uh, requests were approved. So where that, where that bouncing ball follows, is if you go to the next page, when I said earlier, you guys have fifty-one vehicles that are ten years of age or older, these are vehicles that you're staring at, you're going to have to replace these, um, sooner or later. And what we've identified is, in the general fund, which you saw had the least amount of approvals, only ten percent of that was approved over the last six years in terms of what was requested or supposed to prove. You have forty-two vehicles over ten years of age, and the replacement costs on those vehicles would be over three point four million dollars. You guys are staring at an avalanche in terms of vehicle replacement needs in this general fund. If the continued process of kind of kicking the can down the road stays, stays, you're going to start seeing significantly higher maintenance expenses in vehicles that are post catastrophic failure. And then obviously, there's less than the enterprise fund because of the fire market. Does that make sense? So then if you go to the next page, which is page nine, it's a graph, this shows, so what we did, we analyzed all of your operational expenses for your buildings, for your IT, for your fleet, and currently, you're spending one million, five hundred and thirty-seven, seven ninety-nine annually on these expenses. What we've identified is if you make the improvements that Joe and Drake alluded to earlier, we can guarantee that we'll reduce your costs by two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars a year. That's money you're already budgeting spending, so you're not budgeting anything new or anything more. We're just reducing that money that you're already spending inefficiently and redirecting it so that you can get capital that's needed for improvements inside the buildings. Yes?
You have a question, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you're saying guaranteed savings, so who's going to review these numbers? And, you know, if, if there's a certain number they need to get to, and who's overseeing this then? Because if the guarantee doesn't commit, then what is, maybe it's somewhere back later in the presentation, what happens then? You know, is there payback, or is there a fine of some sort, what happens then?
So there's.
If we don't see that total of guarantee, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm in a hurry. Uh, there's a formal process that has to be followed, so what we do is all of these expenses that we've already gathered, all these are bills that you guys currently have today, so then, once we do the project, the bills, we have to measure and verify those bills. So each year after the project, we gather those same expenses, we identify, are you spending what you're, what we said you would save? And if you're not, we have to write you a check, we have to submit a report to you, and then it has to go to the state after we submit it to you.
When you submit this report then, are we reviewing these?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a joint effort, so it's, we admit, we review it with the administration, it's signed off, and then it's sent together to the state.
Rob, can you just mention the state, because there's legislation about these types of programs in the state of Illinois, just actually passed there.
Two thousand four.
Two thousand, those, two thousand four. So I mean, there's a little bit of oversight on the state side to say, hey, you know, they're, they're actually abiding by the contract, that, uh, that they.
For every year that the project's financed, we have to do these, uh, reports. So depending on the length of financing term, it can be ten years, it can be fifteen years.
And this is in the state of Illinois?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's in, there's similar legislation in multiple states.
Yeah, yeah, like Illinois?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I'm fine, thank you.
Sure. So like, when you see the center, uh, graph right here, you show a project payment of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four eighty-eight, that's coming from, so the savings are two hundred and seventy-three thousand, the project payment of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four eighty-eight would, would fund a two million dollar project here. So we could fund two million dollars in needed capital improvements out of the savings that we created, while also creating an additional eighty-five thousand positive cash, where you could reinvest however you see fit. Does that make sense? I'm going to turn it over to Joe. One of the questions we get sometimes when we're working with other communities are, can we do this ourselves? So one of the things we like to illustrate is what that looks like, doing it yourself, versus having someone like us that has the expertise in the market to deliver these types of programs.
This slide shows kind of the key differences there, so the plan bits spec, kind of the traditional method. In that case, the city would need to come up with funds, whether it's capital, whether it's, uh, um, increasing taxes or bond or whatever. You need to come up with the funds to, um, to fund the work, and with, uh, with our strategy and using this procurement method, we're already working within your budget. So your budget's already approved, and we're leveraging savings from within the budget, so we're not going above and beyond what you've already approved. Uh, so that's one of the key differences. Uh, some of these other items, I'll hit on, um, a few of them. With the plan bits spec approach, you're paying as you go, you hire an architect, you hire an engineer, you pay them as they go through the design, you hire the, the contractor. Meanwhile, you're managing all of those, um, entities throughout the whole project. A lot of risk is on the city to manage that and to manage the schedule. With our process that we're presenting today, that's all turnkey under us, so we do the design, we do everything turnkey. And, and with that streamlined approach, it's a lot, uh, quicker of a timeline, and we're able to deliver it at, uh, you know, more efficiently from a cost perspective. And the last thing I'll hit on is, again, uh, the savings, the savings are guaranteed, whereas, um, with the traditional approach, you wouldn't have that guarantee. So all the risk, to sum it up, is kind of shifted to us, the contractor, kind of on all fronts rather than the city.
And the next slide is just the cost of delay slide, uh, that's the, the annual savings of two hundred and seventy-three thousand. This just shows, this just illustrates for every month that a project's delayed, how much it's costing on a monthly basis in additional expenses you're paying that you wouldn't be paying if you implemented a program. Then if you go to the next slide, this is something that we're really proud of. In the last ten years, we've done forty-one contracts like this with other municipalities and counties across the, of the Midwest footprint of Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and, uh, out here in Illinois, we've never missed a guarantee on any of those projects. So we're actually delivering a hundred and seventy-eight percent of our forecasted savings. So if we say we're going to save a hundred dollars, we've been saving a hundred and seventy-eight. Reason for that is we're a family-owned company that's very conservative, uh, we like to sleep at night, we'd rather, uh, over-deliver and under-promise. Uh, that's really how we put these things together, so when Drake and his team in the engineering lab are putting the savings together, we know it's going to save more than what we're going to guarantee, and then we build that financial model around the guaranteed savings dollars, so that anything additional is all yours, and it keeps us safer from missing a guarantee. The next slides, these are the next steps, so really the next step in the process, uh, you see first step is LOI. So we've, we've met with the administration multiple times, we've co-authored the program together, uh, set the scope parameters. Really the next step is if you guys approve issuing the letter of intent, then at that point, we go into what's called an investment grade audit, where we have firm pricing, firm savings, Joe and his team, uh, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. Yeah, if the LOIs approved, uh, then next steps would be really, Mike, um, would be kind of leading the charge from there. The initial meeting with the, the city to determine any, um, project goals, programming changes, scope options, things like that. We'll walk contractors, um, qualified contractors that we pre-qualify, so that we have, um, you have the best contractors that'll deliver the best end result for the city. Walk them through the scope so we can, uh, put together pricing. Meanwhile, our, our engineering team will be doing a detailed energy operational, uh, analysis for the guaranteed savings. And then, um, ultimately, we'll deliver the proposal with the final pricing and savings numbers so that the city can determine which options or which items they want in the ultimate, uh, contract, um, which we would then present, uh, for final approval.
It's a very flexible process. For me or Joe?
Uh, yeah. Uh, probably for the, I, going back to the, before you close out here, because I see you're getting to the end, but going back to the fleet portion of it, I had a question in on the.
Sure.
For the fleet things, um, and Carolyn, you might want to answer this too, but are all of our vehicles done out of the general fund?
No.
Okay.
No, any that are used by water or are paid for. Auto covers.
So, uh, is, did you include that in your figures?
Yeah, so that's.
I was the one, I only saw the general fund.
So the enterprise fund, which is, uh, right here, that encompasses those vehicles that you're referring to.
That was for all the other funds?
Yeah, for different taxing bodies, so we broke them out by two different, uh, categories.
Okay, great. And does that include our heavy equipment as well? Not just the?
Not just vehicles, right? And then, Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot too, but we've had some issues with cars getting damaged. What happens in that situation?
You're gonna hate me.
Does it still, is it still an insurance situation? Does it have any effect when you're leasing it?
It's the same process, it's the exact same process.
Maybe you could say, Rob, typically what happens is like, so I have a car that got wrecked and I'm gonna visit city council in two weeks and I'm gonna have to ask for a budget amendment for, I don't know how much money yet, although, because I didn't budget for the purchase of that replacement vehicle. So with the lease program, because the insurance only pays out so much on value of the car, if I cost them thirty thousand dollars to buy a car, they might give me only six thousand dollars in insurance payout against city council that has to approve a budget amendment for the remainder balance plus the equipment cost. How does it work with the lease? If we're leasing a vehicle and the car's wrecked, do they just give us a new car or how does that, can you explain a little bit how that works?
Chris, you want to take that? Did you deal with that one?
Thanks, Chief, that was what I was asking.
It's a good question. I'd actually like to hear the answer too.
There's really no change in process to what's done today. I mean, you still have an asset that has a value, there has to be a settlement that's affirmed with this program. In the case today, how you do things, you pay for the entire asset upfront and then I'm not sure if you're self-insured or you have an overriding insurance policy that would go out based upon total loss, but it would go through the same reconciliation process?
Okay.
And then it would true up with remaining book value on the lease term versus value of the vehicle at that time. So if there's a delta, that would be that amendment that you have to request, similar to how you do things today.
Okay. Yeah, good, I've heard that with the, with the lease, that, that, that number or that delta is always, you're more or less, it's higher than it is when you pay for it outright. But I don't, I'm not positive on that, so I wouldn't know. Have you seen any?
I don't, I don't have the data to say one is greater than the other. I haven't really seen those numbers, not although if anybody collects those numbers. The reality is the value is the value is the value. It doesn't matter the mechanism that the asset was purchased.
Okay, so it doesn't matter how much you paid into that lease versus having, because the value of the car is what establishes it?
You'll have a, you'll have a decreasing book value along the way.
Okay.
In this case, the way you do it today, whatever the asset costs, I'm not, did you say you crashed something? I can kind of hurt myself.
Let me clarify, we have not crashed anything, people have crashed into us.
Every once in a while, those things happen. The way you do it today, all those funds go out from, all that money goes out from some fund today.
Okay, right.
In the future, you would have incremental payments on whatever that asset is. So it's no different than the way this is structured, like a simple interest loan, not your home mortgage, you know, you're gonna have to pay in, you're gonna, so the delta would be, again, the value is the value, the value is the value.
So an amendment would still be required if it was damaged on a lease versus damaged on a purchase?
If there was a delta in regards to both value to total loss value.
Okay. And then, it's probably another question for you, but does the, over the course of that, that time, does, does interest rate fluctuation change all those numbers or that's a set upon number?
Locked in at date of its service.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
While you're up here. Yeah, with the leasing. Do you, how do you, how do you go out and bid for your leases then? I mean, are you working with multiple companies yourself or how does that work? Are you, you're the person, you're negotiating with who? The manufacturer or are you going through leasing companies themselves?
Yeah, we're, we're nonpartisan to OEMs, so it's our job to ensure that you have the right incentives in place for the right vehicles, the right tool to get the job done. As far as the lease, that's, that's a funding mechanism, there are multiple channels that can be run through.
So you go through multiple channels?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. One more thing.
Sorry.
In that, when it's a specific vehicle, say in a lease vehicle in an interceptor or whatever we're buying today, that's still a vehicle that what we request is what you would get us?
Yeah, we've had extensive conversations about, you know, essentially, we, we, there's a certain spec, there are certain vendors that you, that the city prefers to use. It's not, it is our job to provide alternatives, but ultimately, if you want to keep everything built as is, we're built to support that.
Thank you.
Alderman, Manny? I don't think I read this anywhere, but in a number of places you talk about like this continuous support over the term of the contract. And I wasn't really clear if this gets approved, how, I know you'll come forward with an audit and then there'll be a plan. What's the term of the contract that we would be working with you? Is it somewhat fluid as cars get wrecked and things get changed or is it very defined and?
Yeah, it's, it mirrors the financing term. So whatever you select for the financing, so we'll provide economics on the best lending instruments and terms associated with them. So if you do it on a ten-year financing period, then it mirrors the financing term of ten years is how long we measure and verify and guarantee the savings.
Excellent, thank you.
Alderman, Chief.
And now on the construction side, you have projects going on all the time, correct?
We do six hundred and fifty-eight here.
How does, when, when you work with somebody, how does that project get put into the pipeline? So when you say, do you have unlimited access to construction crews or how does that get the process or timing to get done?
Yeah, we have a pretty deep bench in terms of resources on the project management side and, yeah, we bring more on as more work comes along. But, yeah, those resources are, we tap into and that's why Mike's here. He's really the guy who would take this forward once this is approved.
So is that subcontractors or is that your own people?
Most likely, south base. We do self-perform a couple small trades, but for the projects we're looking at here, most of it would probably be like roof. We don't do roofing, we hire a local roofer. We would put that out for bid, you know, and whoever wanted to be part of that can be part of that. But we would just put up a bid and then we would hire the local. We don't have to go, kind of what they were talking about, the vendors for vehicles and same with the subcontractor base. With the municipalities, we try and show that support locally.
Okay, thanks. So when a, when a bid goes out, same procedure as we normally do bids, how does that work then?
Right, it would go through the same procedures. We would, obviously be involved, but they would do all the work.
They would do all, okay.
And it would still, it would still come before council for approval, correct? Or we identify the projects?
Yeah, once, once the final scope, again, we're gonna price out a lot of different scope items that'll probably exceed what we can fund through the savings. And that's where we'll leverage the city and the staff to determine, all right, which, which of these are the highest priorities that you want to include in the project because we can't fund it all. Then we'll land on the final scope and the final firm pricing that we'll, that we'll put in the contract. So what that would be is you're gonna have different packages. So they mentioned roof. You might have a roof bid that would go out. You may have HVAC bidding that goes out for units in this building, units in another building. So we have to first identify that package before we know what is gonna go out for bid.
Okay, and the bids go out and then when they come, when the three or four bids come back, what's the next step? Is it's, I mean, we review it, you review it with staff and that's where the approval comes through in regards to who we decide to go with? What's that, who makes that final decision?
You guys make the final decision. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna come back to you with a report that looks like a menu. And it's gonna show, in this building, you may have HVAC and roofing and building automation controls and we have cost by trade for each thing in this building. And then at the parks department and then at every other building. And then you say, yeah, these are, whatever committee you choose to, to make the final selections, you say, yeah, these are the improvement items we want to have. Then we come back to you with a contract with financing to approve it in one contract.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Hammond? Who's the contract with when it's signed?
Us.
Was it between you and the subs?
Our contract is with you and then, yeah, we had a contract with the subs.
Yeah, exactly. We, we'd have contracts with the subs, but our, our contract with you would be direct. So you'd have one contract, you wouldn't have, like, again, with the typical traditional approach, you'd have a contract with the architect, contract, right, engineer. Yours would be turnkey with us.
So are you going to comply with all the requirements that we would need to comply with if the contract was directly with us?
Yes.
You're gonna have it.
Yeah. Family wage. Yes.
Alderman, Chief?
When you say that you bring it back to us, what we see is like what you're saying is the menu of the finished product. We're not gonna see, the way we see it today is we'll see a project that's been bid out and we'll see the actual bid that's been returned by, like Alderman Santis said, three or four contractors. And we'll see that, we can kind of look at the line items that we will not see anymore in this process, correct?
Yeah, this is more of a design, build, turnkey approach, correct?
Okay. I just wanted that to be clear to everybody so they... And then one other thing, I'm sorry, with the, this might go to you, Mr. Hobson, but I didn't see the pool on there as a project, I know, did that not make the list?
Pool's not on there.
Wow, how did that get missed? Okay.
Just in terms of efficiency, you know, we talked about from our rec department, we looked at some solar panels on the roof at the...
Right, but not the pool mechanical side? Okay. So, yeah, thank you, Carolyn.
Yes, if you don't have a... I'm sorry. Alderman, have somebody have a question?
About other quick things. So we'd be committing fifty thousand dollars based on the LOI?
No, right, so like, if, that's a great segue for the next slide, slide fourteen. So, yeah, the, the way our, what we approach our business is we do a letter of intent. If we can't find a self-funding program, meaning where the savings exceeds the payment for the project, then you don't owe us anything. If we were to provide a self-funding program that meets all the goals that we've already laid out, working through with you guys, and then you decide at that point, after we deliver our proposal and do all that engineering, if at that point you decided not to move forward the project, then you would owe us the fifty thousand for our engineering expenses. But you only pay that if we deliver a self-funding program and you don't move forward.
Right. And I understood that. So on that second scenario, how many times has that happened with your company where you've identified cost savings and the municipality has decided not to move forward?
Only, only once in the last probably three years.
Okay. And then, just in your process, and I forgot what's on slide, it's on, I think, actually it's on one twenty or...
One twenty?
One nineteen of our...
Oh, I don't have that, I'm sorry. I'll have a little presentation.
It's your page twelve.
Our page twelve, thank you.
Got you.
So on the right-hand side there, it says that we'll see the contract after we sign the LOI. Is there a reason why we can't see a kind of contract that you've done before at this stage?
Well, maybe thirteen, sorry.
Oh, thirteen, sorry. Sorry, what is your question?
I guess, you know, is there a reason, is it possible for us to see an example of one of the contracts you've signed with other municipalities? So we, right now, we'd be committing the fifty thousand, one way or the other, but we don't know what the contract will look like later.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the part of the next step, I don't know if it's explicitly put in there, but the first thing we'll do is get a sample terms and conditions contract out. So we'll get that template out so that we can begin the review process for that.
For the business terms.
Exactly, for the business terms, so that at the end, once the scope's developed, we just essentially put it in and it's already, the business terms will be approved with the final contract then.
Right, but if we don't agree on the terms, then we owe you fifty thousand dollars? That's his point, where you can, again, we see some terms and conditions to see the ballpark? Aren't they all the same? Within ten degrees?
Yeah, I mean, our contract, yeah, that's something we can absolutely provide. That's something we typically do during the investment grade audit stage, but that's something we certainly can provide. It, it wouldn't be, I guess I'll say this though, as a kind of qualifier to that, it wouldn't be, I guess, it wouldn't really be worth the time to go through all of the terms and conditions if there wasn't interest from the city to move forward with the project. So I guess, there's a little bit of...
Some of the terms and, some of the terms and conditions that are associated with these types of projects have to meet the statutes of the legislation for this type of work. So we have to adhere to certain terminology to satisfy the requirements of the state. So that's...
Yeah, he's not worried about that, he's worried about the teeth.
That's why it'd be helpful to see a sample of what you've done on other projects or other municipalities.
Yeah, I mean, the scope's gonna be massively different, I mean, in other...
He's not worried about that either, he's worried about the teeth.
When you say teeth, I'm not sure what you mean.
Like when we sue each other over it, do you collect attorney's fees? Do both parties collect attorney's fees? Where's the venue? Is there arbitration? No arbitration? I mean, those, where's the, you know, he's a lawyer, that's why he's asking.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, yeah, those are things we go, those are things we go through during the review process. We can send our typical standard product.
I mean, like the one town that walked away from it, they didn't walk away because of a fight over the terms and conditions, did they?
No, no, it was, it was more scope-driven.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we have, that's something we can easily send to you.
Thank you. Any other questions by council? Like in the next ten minutes?
Alderman?
All right.
Chief?
Yeah, I just thought, I wanted to add, can you guys, can you guys talk a little bit about, you said if it doesn't meet the self-funding threshold, I mean, are we talking ten bucks or are we talking fifty bucks? Like if you do all this work and you say, okay, we're gonna save the city a thousand dollars if we do this work for you, city might come back and say, you know what, it's just more beneficial for us to do this on our own and it's because we're only, you're only gonna save a thousand dollars. So is there some kind of a, like a dollar amount set for that threshold? Like, we're gonna get, like, in order to be on the hook for that fifty, like...
Yeah, it's comparable, it's comparable to what was delivered in the initial report. So the report that we provided back in September, if we're not able to find a program that is comparable...
So the language is gonna be whatever, within that two hundred, you're thinking already that you're gonna save us that much money, so it's not...
Yeah, we, we know, right?
You do the investment grade audit and then the numbers come back the other way, that's where that, is there a threshold?
Yeah, I mean...
Fifty thousand dollars?
The one thing I want to make, the one thing I want to make completely clear, if we delivered this report, we did this report under worst-case scenario projections. We know going in at the next level, we're going to find these additional things that are gonna have higher returns than what we provide at this level. We always do. When we go in and we really get into the ground zero as opposed to being at five thousand foot level, we always find more.
So, and just to clarify, so the guaranteed savings that you're projecting in this presentation could be higher, but you really don't see it being lower?
No.
So we're not, the council doesn't have to be too concerned about what that self-funding threshold amount is because you're targeting that two seventy-three or better.
Correct.
And then the one thing we talked about was, council brought this up the last time you guys came, was, you know, you're, you're standing before us as being the company that wants to come do this, what's the, can you explain to them a little bit about how the bid process can be waived? So we're just dealing with the apartment, we don't have to go out and try to shop for three different companies that are gonna do the same thing that you're gonna do? Who's gonna offer us the best deal? We talked a little bit about that, I know that's the answer there.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, the way this is set up through the statute, it, which is fifty ILCS five fifteen one and sixty-five ILCS five eight dash nine one, it's a professional service. So this is done as a professional service where you can enter into a contract with the contractor and go directly to an investment grade audit.
Is that good for your day?
I haven't been involved in this.
No.
I didn't, I haven't been asked about this.
The other comment I would made is that, that some of us from the staff, we had an opportunity to travel to Hammond, Indiana, who actually entered into an agreement with Beapardo for very similar services. Got the chance to sit down with them and kind of go over some of, some of what happened in the city of Hammond, Indiana, with the chief of police and the chief of staff for the mayor. And they had nothing but positive feedback to provide on how they were able to leverage cost savings through changes in energy and so forth, to leverage cost savings to take changes in energy and so forth, to leverage cost savings to take that money and reinvest it back into their community, and they, they were in probably the worst financial straits than the city of McHenry was.
All right. Al, my chief?
Can you go back to page nine, the guaranteed savings slide? The, the, the middle, the middle column where you show the savings of eighty-five thousand dollars, that's what you're saying savings would be above, or I mean, those two numbers added together is the two seventy-three, I get that, but that savings is what's coming back to us to spend, put it in a different fund, kind of thing? And then the two seventy-three?
That's after the financing period's over.
So that's not per year, that's the whole project?
No, it's per year, it's per year, so the, if you look at the two hundred and seventy-three thousand nine ninety guaranteed savings, a hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-eight is coming out of that to make the payment. The additional eighty-five thousand is just additional cash flow that you can use however you see fit.
And that's an annual?
That's on an annual basis, correct. And then after the financing period ends, you still have these savings for, depending on how long-term the financing is, the useful life of everything that we're recommending, a twenty-year useful life or longer. So if you did this for a ten-year financing period, you would see those, those two hundred and seventy-three thousand nine ninety pure savings over the next ten years. It does a fifteen-year financing for an additional five years before the useful life would expire on the initial construction.
Now, that's separate from the vehicles part? These numbers are all separate from the vehicles part?
The savings are put in vehicle numbers.
Well, the vehicle numbers, but not the actual vehicle payments, right? Anything else? Any other questions, comments by council?
Al, my chief? I've spoken to two or three of you probably back in September on, on a conference call, and I appreciate you doing that with me. It, it, there's a lot of control here that, you know, that, I mean, it's, it's like, I read this whole thing and, and in a nutshell, it's just like, it's like, we're kind of handing off the budget to them and you operate this and take care of it, and, you know, you've got the cost-saving professional people there, and I'm just concerned that we're not, I don't know, I want to make sure that we're able to be part of this process and, and from time to time, if, if there needs to be a adjustment, or I don't know what to explain, that there's something that it just doesn't, you know, just like, sorry, can you take care of this? It, it seems like we're, we're, you know, I understand this is only LOI tonight, but, you know, that next step is a huge step. In, in my book, it's, it's just a very huge step.
Yeah, there's, we've worked, we've worked with lots of different, as I said, done it multiple ways, we've had people that have assigned committees, that have people from up here, people from administration, all reviewing everything that comes in, we've had folks hand it off to administration, we're flexible. However, whatever you need to be comfortable as far as data input, believe me, we're great at data. You see the looks that we deliver, we've got an engineering item for everything. So it's how much...
Yeah, I know the staff doesn't have the expertise or that for doing everything, but I, this is, staff squatting office, is what I'm saying.
Yes. Any other questions, comments? All women, vanning. All women in the meadow. All women divine. Thank you, council. Thank you, guys, all that work you put in, I appreciate it. I want to thank staff for getting all that information. I know the directors, chief, and all the other directors here, they're working that and that, they're always there to make work, so, they go. Next item on the agenda, you guys are more than, you guys, you guys are... Next item on the...
Thanks, good.
Take care. Next item on the agenda is discussion item, I'm, we're gonna go ahead and discuss District one fifty-six and District fifteen real quick. Attorney McConnell?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry to have to do this to you at this time, but at the last meeting, the motion was to approve District one fifty-six. Assembly is subject to four conditions, and this is informal tonight, and I don't think, I don't, we may need more, but, so one of the conditions was presentation of information by the city staff relative to the Northwest Drainage Agreement that was referenced by Alderman Glab, if you recall at the last meeting, and a staff review of the West Drainage Agreement pertaining to lots one through thirty-nine. So since the last meeting, I was, sent a number of documents to review and so forth, and they've been distributed to you. So the two I'm interested in talking to you about is the, attached to the exhibit, as I mentioned in the note there that Derek sent out, is Exhibit A-one, that has those three references that are in white boxes, I'll reference those, and then also the drawing with like triangles on there, I'll reference those as well. That should do it. And, and the way this works is there was an agreement that Alderman Glab did reference at the last meeting, we pulled it, I believe we're talking about the same agreement, it was the intergovernmental agreement with the district that was reached in nineteen, two thousand and sixteen, and you have a copy of that, and I, again, in my memo, I detailed that, but I'll run through it quick. Paragraph number one of that agreement requires the district to take care of the property referenced as the D-one fifty-six drainage easement that extends from lots...
Do all of you have that information?
I'm trying to find it.
Where's Derek's email?
It's an email from Derek, and it's got the attached agreement.
Got it.
Oh, I see.
Thank you, sorry.
You got it, Bobby?
Yep, thank you.
So, paragraph number one there does obligate the district to maintain the drain, the one fifty-six drainage easement, which is depicted on A-one as being lots numbered ten through thirteen, I believe, ten through thirteen, so we know that's true. And the paragraph number two obligates them to maintain the riprap detention area, I'm sorry, the D-one fifty-six drainage easement is lots twenty-seven through, come on, come on, come on, twenty-seven through thirty-nine, and, and paragraph number two has them obligated to take care of ten through thirteen. So that leaves two areas that are still in question. And the question is, lots... Lots one through nine and fourteen through twenty-eight, those are not addressed in the agreement particularly. So, if you go to this drawing with the triangles, does everybody have that? Now, now it becomes relevant, the planted easements. Do those or do those not obligate the district, or anyone for that matter, to maintain the drainage ditch? And there's two, two easements. Lots one through twenty-eight are encumbered by a ten-foot wide easement that is only on the lot side, it's not on the district side. So obviously, the, the district doesn't have an obligation to maintain those easements, since it's not even on their property, except for the riprap area. And then the other lots, twenty-nine through thirty-nine, are encumbered by both a five-foot wide drainage and utility easement on the lot side, and the same thing on the district side. So there is some reference to an easement response, easement there, okay? The drainage. So as I mentioned in my email here, the agreement's covered, we know what they have to maintain under that, and under drainage law, our opinion is even the ten-foot easement along lots one through twenty-eight, the district doesn't have an obligation to maintain that lot, but they have a right to if they choose to. So if someone along those lots is not taking care of their property, or they build a deck over it, or they do some other improvement to impede the flow, because they're beneficiaries of that drainage easement, they have a right under the drainage law to go in it and maintain it.
They being the district?
The district, it's always about the district's obligation, because that one's a question. And the same thing, we have an opinion of with regard to lots twenty-nine through thirty, on the five feet that's on the plot side. If that's a problem, they can go on there and make the improvement, we just don't feel that there's an obligation on their part to do so. That's about it. That was the, that's the explanation of the drainage rights and obligations with regard to that ditch, under that agreement, and under the law.
Alderman?
Yeah, I mean, one of the problems is, number one, that drainage ditch with these descriptions don't address the entire drainage ditch. That I know for a fact, because part of that drainage ditch runs on my property, and I'm not in Boog Valley Platte seven, I'm in Boog Valley Platte four, of which probably thirty-five, forty feet of my property has the drainage ditch running across it in one direction, and the drainage easement of ten foot is, is the opposite direction. The other problem winds up on lot, would probably be lot ten, I believe, on Silvery, it backs up, and it would be the northeast corner of that property. The drainage way is probably twenty-five feet in from the end of the property line to where the drainage ditch actually is. I don't call through anybody here or anybody, you know, that's been at City Hall probably in the last twenty-five, thirty years. So, how many years, you know, years ago that they grew up all these plants? I actually, I don't know, so, I just don't know. My question is, who's gonna be in that, that property? You know, not into the easement. Glad Attorney McConnell got involved and it's so bad. If they ask the school to maintain ninety-eight percent of the drainage ditch, and that two percent in the middle somewhere isn't being maintained, the ditch is gonna screw up the rest. We need to make sure, some kind of agreement between all the property owners and the school and the city, so that this all runs properly and everybody knows where they stand on it and, and what their responsibilities are. As far as those properties like Kensington and Silvery that back up to the drainage ditch as well as me, you know, because I am a property owner there, and the school and the city, and just come up with, and hammer it out, I'm, the one property that I was talking about is just a rental property now, those, that owner about ten or eleven years ago moved across town and just rents it out. I somewhat know that person well enough to know that they would probably easily work with the city and whatever needed to be done there, you know, the one that has the drainage easement way outside, or the, the drainage ditch way outside of the easement. I don't think that'd be a problem, you know, but unless we're talking to everybody together of what's going on here, I don't think it'll ever get corrected to the extent to where the whole system will work the way it should. As well as, we have a property owner that is on the other side of Kensington Drive, the feeder street, that has that drainage area that has the trees and everything else growing in there, and all that rock right at the edge of the, the street, that needs to get cleaned up too, so that it's a clear sailing all the way through the creek. Because the faster we get all that, that water out of there, the better it is for every, everybody, including the, the school. The school right now has problems with water sitting on their, with their property, they've got their, their mower that is now sunk, their wheels are about ten inches into the mud because they can't get it out of there because they can't get another vehicle anywhere near there to haul it out, and it's been sitting there for five days. We've had people that have worried about overflows of the drainage ditch in certain areas that, you know, will impact possibly on a hundred-year storm, could possibly impact them as far as their basements. Some of them complain about their cell pumps since the last time there was an expansion. Needless to say, and I think Alderman Miller and I had that little discussion about underground development, you never know what it's gonna do as far as changing the direction of drainage, but the faster the stuff comes, goes out to the creek, the better it is for everybody, you know, maybe it'll dry up some of that underground water, I don't know. So, anyway, that's, that's where I stand on it, we just need to get everybody together on, on board.
Al, my chief?
The way this looks is, is kind of what Alderman Glab is saying, but wouldn't it make sense to amend this agreement to include all the areas, the school, the residents and, and the city, on, and, I mean, keep what's there, but add those areas of, of, that are missing or that are ambiguous? And it's not that the city should do it, or that the school should do it, you know, like we would do it anywhere else, if it's the residents' responsibility, then, you know, that would be included. But, to me, it would make sense to maintain this, but only fix it so it includes all the areas that Andy just mentioned.
Yeah, that would be fine, but we know from personal experience here in the city, recent experience, that this is a lot of homeowners, dealing with much fewer is difficult. To get all these homeowners on the same page is gonna be impossible. So, the reason the drainage law exists is because we can't have an agreement with the school, it's a school, you, you know, if it's not working, you need to go do it, or city, you need to go do it, but to get the homeowners...
Because it's two parties.
Yeah, yeah, two responsible parties. Homeowners, all, everybody has an opinion about something, and they're all, their view of what's appropriate drainage is different than the neighbors. It'd be very difficult to have standards and stuff.
Alderman Miller?
I think there's an education component here that we need to employ. Many of these homeowners are probably not original owners, they probably have never seen this agreement, they have no understanding what that easement is, or who owns it, who has to take care of it. And just as we were assuming the school had some responsibility there, and thank you for your homework, clearly we're hearing now they don't, that they have a very small portion of that, which is their responsibility, and they have the right to go onto other people's property to maintain that, but they don't have an obligation. So I think we need to consider, and I'm not sure, I'm the new girl on the block here, if we've done this before, we need to put an education component out to these thirty-nine lots, and say, here's what we've discovered, these are what you need to do, and this is what the school's obligation is. Because I think in my conversation with Alderman Glab, some of these homeowners aren't homeowners, they're tenants, they don't understand, and they always want to kick the can to someone else. So if we educate them and say, lot one through twenty-eight, it appears, you own that land, there's no part of that easement on the school's side, you should be maintaining it.
Yeah, but don't go that far, because he, he doesn't say that.
I get that. We'll let you draft that perfect language, I'm just saying...
Oh, no, but what I'm...
We need an education component, because maybe they don't know. I would go out on a limb and say some of those folks don't even know where their lot lines are.
Yeah, but everybody knows there's a utility easement out there, so, and I know I can't put a house on it and I'm gonna just leave it grow. And, but there's nothing in the platte language that says, it, that drainage easement includes an obligation to maintain.
I agree. But as a homeowner or a property user, if that's your land, if it were grass, you'd be obligated to mow it. But as a homeowner or a property user, if that's your land, if it were grass, you'd be obligated to mow it. If the drainage ditch is on your side of the lot, you should have an obligation to make it usable.
Passable, right.
So, there's an education component there that some of those property users slash owners may not realize it's their responsibility. So I think before we go creating a new agreement, because you're never going to get all those people on the same page, there should be a education component in front of that. So whether that's a town hall, whether that's a letter in the mail, whether that's some kind of a, hey, by the way, we did this information and by the way, I think we need to go out front on this because it's got to be resolved.
Alderman?
But we do need to do our homework.
Absolutely.
And again, excuse me, I'm going to use my memory from twenty-plus years ago. Again, this has been an issue for way before I was in Alderman. Fred Batt, who used to be Director of Public Works years ago, told me that the city used to maintain it somehow with some agreement with the school. The school wound up, or no, I'm sorry, the school with an agreement with the city back in the eighties or something, that the city started maintaining it. You, you, you realize that there are probably four to five drainage pipes, sewers, that come out of the, the streets that go into this drainage ditch. So that becomes the city's responsibility to maintain that drainage ditch because of the sewers. But, you know, I mean, we would probably talk and have to go back to the plats of Boo Valley Plat seven when that, that was all done. You know, I mean, let, let's put it this way. We didn't have the expertise for this thing was done in the city. I mean, you know, this is done in the sixties and the seventies and we really didn't even have a director that was just in charge of public works, I don't think, until about eighty-six or eighty-seven before it was. What's your responsibility of, of community development, pub works and everything else all rolled into one? And, you know, as the city grew, it matured more and more with more expertise. We, I think it was nineteen ninety-one when we brought John Robedo in. That was actually with some expertise into building and zoning and community development. So, I guess what I'm getting at is, is do we go back and try and figure out the history of whose responsibility originally it was supposed to be? We could be, we could be doing that for weeks. You know, the thing is, is it's there. That drainage way is impacted. If, if, if this, if we're going to make the homeowners along Kensington and Silvery maintain that, then we need to rebuild it. And we need to rebuild it so that it can be maintained by a homeowner. Not, I mean, that drainage ditch is deplorable. It's totally deplorable. You realize how many times I fished out concrete block on my property, out of that drainage ditch, that were probably concrete pieces that were maybe forty, fifty pounds? Because the force of the water could be that great to actually drag concrete blocks from the beginning of that drainage wave all the way down. And some of it that didn't stop at my property wound up on the other side of Kensington in the, the lower part of the drainage pipe that, that comes out from underneath the street. So there's a lot of issues there and I just think that if we are going to ask the residents to maintain it, then we have to put that back into shape enough for them to maintain. I don't think we're going to wind up getting these homeowners to take it and fix it. It's, it's, again, a drainage system that if it's going to work, the whole system has to work all the way across. In other words, from lot one to thirty-nine and then so with my.
I don't know if that's our responsibility though. That's a lot.
Well, it's our responsibility because we put the, the sewers in there.
But.
We put the sewers into.
The drainage ditch and the sewers are two different things, am I right?
No, no, no. The sewers are in an easement going to the, the drainage ditch, which is part of the easement that goes out to Boo Creek. So it is all part of the, the city's infrastructure of drainage, except this is open ditching instead of closed sewers. I mean, we, we did it years back in about nineteen, I want to say about ninety-six or ninety-five. What was noted as the Thornwood Drainage Ditch. Because they used to have an open ditch and they put in a pipe over there just north of Dartmoor between Thornwood and Water's Edge. But I'm sure it's the city's responsibility. The thing is, is how many documents we're going to have to go through to find it? Or find out whose responsibility it is. If the city put in sewers, they're there to, it's their responsibility to maintain those sewers, which we haven't. That's why you have an easement, for the city to go in there and clean it out or whatever they need to do. Just as well as the, the rest of the drainage easement. If you're going to say that, well, it's the homeowner's responsibility, you're really dumping responsibility on, on them that they never had before and they didn't create the drainage problems in the first place.
Alderman Miller?
So it sounds to me that we don't have enough information to make any recommendations or decisions on what to do about this drainage ditch. And, and again, calling New Girl on the Block because I am. I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at staff and say, can you bring us more information? And, and tell us what we need to know about what impact the city has on this drainage ditch. And I've not walked the drainage ditch. I'd be glad to do so. I don't know what the condition is from start to finish. Clearly you have. I'm not going to trespass on people's properties because that's not my job either.
You don't want to go that close to the drainage ditch.
Awesome. So Ross Troy, is there something that you can bring us information wise?
I'll, I'll just say I did walk that drainage dis- ditch last week from the beginning to the end and it's not really in deplorable condition. The vegetative growth that's on the banks of it in some areas is, where I think the, the issue lies more than anything, but the ditch itself is fairly clear from the beginning to the end. And I walked in the ditch all the way down. There are a few areas that could use some cleaning, but there are definitely areas in town that are a lot worse than that condition. So, you know, again, turning to Attorney McCarty, you know, whose responsibility is it? Nowhere on any plats is it labeled who's responsible to maintain that ditch and that's a discussion that we had. There's usually a block on a plat that says this responsibility falls under this individual or this group of individuals. That is nowhere to be found, correct?
Agreed.
So at that point, it's, you know, I don't know. I, I, as far as making a home, I can't even get homeowners to cut their own lawn, let alone go down and clean out a drainage ditch. So I mean, it's going to be, that itself would be a feat.
But it's not the city's responsibility, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm, I'm not legal, so.
But it's nowhere, nowhere is it documented. It's the city's responsibility.
No, it was obviously part of the homeowners. The homeowners have.
It is or it isn't?
The homeowners have an obligation not to block the creek. So the argument would be if they let the grass grow and the trees grow and the things fall over, they're blocking the creek. So I would think a court would, you know, I've read this in cases, but there's lots of old drainage cases we could do a lot of, spend a lot of time on. But, you know, the, the courts would probably say, you have to clear that off your property because you have an obligation not to block the ditch and your trees block the ditch or your grass or whatever it is. But beyond that, it's totally silent.
What if you sent them a letter that said you were, we were going to take care of it? Do they have to agree to it?
I don't think they really, you have, you have a right, well, you, the city, I think the city has a right to. But certainly the neighboring property who's going to be damaged by their not doing it, has a right to go onto the property. That's why it's called an easement. Just like the utility can walk right on the utility easement without asking you. I think their neighbors can go right on the property and start cutting the grass.
But it isn't grass.
Whatever it is, whatever, pick out the blocks, whatever the problem is, they, they, they have a right to go in there and clean the ditch.
So the city would have a right to go in there because they're a, they're a neighbor.
I would think so. Who's going to complain by complaining, cleaning a ditch?
So Ross, do we have starb sewers that dump, dump into that ditch?
There are, yes.
And are they on public? They're, they're obviously underground.
They come off of Kensington and Silvery.
They're in easements.
They're, they're in current easements?
Right, but that, that, I mean, that's general practice. So every drainage easement in the city of McHenry has a.
Sewer.
Storm sewer that dumps into that area. So with that thinking, then the city would be responsible for every drainage easement in the city, I would think. Because all those drainage easements convey water from a.
Right. The city has a right to go in. Just like we did on that other block, you know, where we cleaned up the, the.
The, uh.
Drywall.
Right.
The drywalls?
Yep.
I mean, they were complaining that our streets were draining into the drywalls as well.
That was, that was.
So in this, this neighborhood is, is different than a lot of our, our neighborhoods that have been built in modern standards. A lot of these outfalls discharge directly into this, I don't know if it's a creek or it's just.
Drainage ditch.
A drainage ditch. So, modern design standards, most of these outfalls would outfall to some sort of a basin or something. But, but even the modern designs that we have, those basins are issues because a lot of times those basins are not maintained because they're not specifically dedicated to the city for maintenance. So the, you have, the maintenance of outfalls is, is a bit of the level we have in the city.
So what are we trying to accomplish here?
Yeah, I don't know that too.
I walked, I walked it with District one fifty-six last year when Alderman Glab had some concerns. They did clean it up. Of course, it's not to your liking.
No, they didn't clean it up. They cleaned up their, their rip wrap.
Did they, did they clean it up in a way that?
I did not walk it last year. I walked it this year about two, two weeks ago. And, I mean, honestly, it, it wasn't in that poor a shape. When you get up on the embankments, you know, yes, people stopped maintaining it. So you got the center of the drainage ditch, but people stopped maintaining it a little bit further and further every year away from that drainage easement. And it's become, you know, just overgrown growth outside of the actual, there's a, there's a concrete.
Channel.
Gutter or a channel that, that runs that entire length.
It's the base.
Right.
And that's where the water runs.
Well, it has to be where the water runs. It's the lowest point.
Bottom.
It's at the lowest point, right. So up on the banks, you know, people just stopped maintaining further and further away from it and it's become overgrown.
You're familiar with the sewer that comes out by me?
I am.
Okay. On a hundred-year storm, you will not see that, the top of that sewer. That's how much water was coming.
Oh, I believe it. I mean.
Now, of course, you know what? I shouldn't say that as a statement because since they put in the detention pond, we haven't had a hundred-year storm. You know, I mean, really, we have like. We were getting two or three of them a year there and then they, they finally put the expansion on eighteen years ago and put in the detention and now there's no hundred-year storms to test it to see if what they did really helped or not.
I mean, we don't have flooding issues here like we do in other parts of town. I'll tell you that. The water is conveyed to where it's supposed to go. Does it linger around maybe a little bit longer than it should? Possibly. But it generally thro- flows through the ditch without adversely affecting the, the neighboring properties.
It's destroying the ditch. The ditch has deteriorated quite a bit just in the last couple of years.
The, the biggest.
Troy, you saw, you saw my sewer.
The biggest issues on it are not, there aren't, as far as I'm aware, there aren't any major flow restrictions or anything. It's risking a, a significant damage to property or even a yard. The, the biggest issues I would say are scour and erosion. And, and it's deemed that it's our responsibility to take care of any of those issues. It's just a matter of the resources willing to dedicate to that effort.
All we need is, we need, we need a game plan. And then we need to go to the residents and, and again, we need to do some history as far as where we're at with it. But we need a game plan of what this, this drainage ditch, what needs to happen to it to where it's, number one, maintainable for anybody to maintain. And that it will alleviate a lot of the deterioration that, that is happening through the erosion. Four years ago, I had no erosion around the sewer, the city sewer that's over there. Now all of a sudden, there's gaping holes.
And, and any, any.
And once it starts, it gets worse and worse and worse.
Any resource we dedicate to the effort is something we're pulling from another interest and that's, that's what I'm.
If there's no flooding, if there's no, is there residents that are complaining about flooding?
Just a lot of underground water. There were a lot of the, that are.
Cell pumps.
Cell, thank you. Cell pumps are, are running.
We have some high ground water there, so, I mean, that's happening everywhere.
And I don't know if you can attribute any.
Their water, their water fucks up that, you know.
Right.
The creek, it's going to alleviate some.
And we have a good relationship with District one fifty-six. The residents, I mean, if there's an issue, believe me, if there was an issue, the residents would reach out to us. There's no issues there. We get those on a regular basis from certain issues. I, 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 I just don't see spending time and money and, and resources when we have multiple other things that we need to get done. And that's my personal opinion.
Yes, I understand. But this is a residential area.
I'm talking.
Eddie, you're, you're, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm on a tour.
So, at the same point, I think, you know, if, if, if the majority of council would like us to do that and do some re, you know, research and whatever you'd like us to do, we can certainly do that. But I need direction from council because I, I'm, I'm not going to be, keep spinning our wheels. So, direction from council, where do you want us to go?
I have a lot of trust in our staff and if it's really not the disaster that it's being portrayed to be. And I have, I live in Legend Lakes. We are in the watershed. We have issues like this all the time. And as homeowners, we all, it's, it always gets handled. It's always handled, you know? So I, I think we have other things. I think we spent way too much time discussing this topic.
And everyone else agree with, agree with us?
I have one question though. Is, is there, you know, we have a very good relationship with one fifty-six. We cannot, we cannot have some kind of agreement with them, with them in regards of following and, and going through the easements and checking it from time to time?
They're willing to walk with it. I mean, they, you know, they're willing to walk with it.
But I mean, even, even in that area that's not covered by anything, it's just an easement down there that we're the owners of, we really should.
Yeah, District one fifty-six has been more than willing to work with us. I mean, you know, but it can't be by one council member. I mean, you know, it's got to be by the majority. And it seems like a lot of these items go by one or two council members. And we spin our wheels as, as staff or myself or Attorney McCarty. That costs us money. So, you know, it, it, it goes to a point where the relationship with District one fifty-six or even District fifteen are very strong. So we need to use those opportunities that we have and those relationships we have to get these projects done in-house without using Attorney McCarty on every little item. And I consider this little considering that not one resident has complained. I know a lot of this has, you know, a, a jumping, an area by Alderman Glab's house. But at the same point, where do we stop? And I, I think this is where we stop, to be honest.
Agreed.
And, and I don't want, I don't, I, I don't want to waste the, any more time on this myself. And I definitely don't want, not Mr. McCarty, but I just don't want, you know, him digging into, you know, some, some information from the, from the sixties or the seventies on this. But if we can at least have, and I don't know, maybe it's got to be on paper, something with one fifty-six to maintain this thing, Dr. Metag, Meteeg?
Metag.
Metag. Said to me face to face, he's willing to reconstruct portions if it's needed in that area. And, okay, I'll take it for what is, what his word, but that's what he said to me. And I would like to make sure that, you know, we're covering our bases and doing that and, and having some kind of agreement with them. So, you know, it, it can be, I, I don't know any problems there, but I walked it and just the growth is, I can tell where the growth is definitely impeding on, on drainage here. And if they can maintain it, reconstruct or fix it when needed, I'd like to have that. I'd like to be able to have the superintendent, you know, if you put his money where's, where's mouth is.
So by majority of council, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I build a pretty good relationship with the gentleman who's kind of running the project for one fifty-six. I mean, I, I'll go out there with him, take some pictures, bring back a report if that, if that makes council more comfortable to see pictures and, you know, things. And then you can make, base your decision off that. Obviously, that's up to the mayor and however he wants to do it. But, you know, I'll take pictures of the entire. But, um, you know, I'll take pictures of the entire drainage area, the problems that I know exist down, there's a structure that probably could use some work. And maybe I'll talk to District one fifty-six and they, you know, see what we could do with it. But, uh, you know, they're not obligated to do it. Mayor, maybe that's where, you know, we have that discussion with.
But it sounds like they're willing.
They are, one hundred percent. They, I mean, they they're willing to walk with each one of you if you want, so, I mean, I need direction, right, you know, at this point, are you, you know, okay to trust staff with this and move along?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
May I have a second?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor of.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with that, this discussion is over. So District fifteen, Attorney McArdle?
Uh, we're not gonna do that tonight.
Okay, I'm good with that. At this time, staff reports, are there any staff reports this evening? I'm gonna go ahead and uh move on and then that way staff can go ahead and get out of here.
Soapbox stories this weekend.
Yes, perfect, I'll be there.
And then before we, uh, David Peterson Farmer, you have to clarify on that.
Okay, any other staff reports?
Rogue program was released for bid today, bid to do twenty first chair.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to let council know, at the last city council meeting, there was some discussion that that staff would, that I would go back and do some research on the topic of alcohol. I hate to read this back up, alcohol licensing and video gaming. And I just, by the next city council meeting, you guys should have some answers to some of your questions. David and I have been working on trying to get some answers to being able to define some language uh when it comes to gaming parlors. Provide some perspective on how we might be able to regulate the perception of video gaming with options to counsel. Along with some further definitions of the personal care establishment license. That's all.
Thank you, any other comments, I said? Uh, next is my report, I I, city clerk, we interviewed four uh city clerk applicants. I have chosen one to bring forward in two weeks, um that I think is a great fit for the city, a lot of energy, uh obviously a resident. So, uh, I will bring that back here in the next council meeting. As far as tonight, um, I just, I express my concerns and, uh, you know, with not the approval of, um, that business is disheartening. Concerning that not only staff, myself, honestly, work hard every day to bring businesses here. And we just turned one away that can go right next door. And that is ludicrous. And I strongly urge all of you to actually talk more than, to more than four freaking people, cause there's a lot of people in this town. So tonight I'll be making a post and sending out an e-blast with your emails attached to it to show how much support is for different types of businesses here. I am not gonna waste my years, time away from my family, to try to bring opportunities and unique businesses to this community and shut them down. I'm not. So, I will make that post tonight, just like the vaping, they were loud, people hated me for it, and I will tell you, it came back eighty, twenty. It's because you listened to a lot of people and honestly, the wrong ones. I have nothing further, so, city council comments?
I'm gonna share your post.
Thank you.
Um, Chief, do you have your parking analysis available or is that?
No, they're still working on it, I hope they have it to you guys by the next city council meeting though.
No, I, no rush, I didn't know if I missed it.
No, cause it's, it's definitely another topic, it's, we're, on the staff level, we're, we're talking about parking almost on a daily basis at this point, um, when it comes to the downtown business district. So, we're, we're ready to get that study, I'm sure it's gonna show exactly what, what we've learned through complaints and probably what council has learned through complaints is that we're, we're bursting at the seams, so.
Can I ask a favor, I brought this up to the mayor earlier too, and I know your, your people do uh business visits. But, um, it's very noticeable when business people and employees park in the downtown area, especially when they have their business names on their vehicles. Is there anything that we can do to politely ask them not to utilize those spaces or is that, that's something we can do?
Legally, legally, no, um, but it's been a topic of conversation, reference how the city manages their permit parking and what permit parking is available. We, and at some point, we're gonna, we're gonna have to put a couple more of the staff members in a room together to come up with some options that we can bring back to council for a recommendation to a change in the downtown business district parking regulations. Because that is one of the problems that we, we've seen is, we have so many businesses that have started to grow now, well, they all have employees. And so then those employees need places to park while they're actually working at those businesses and that's where we're running out of parking spots already. So, we've alleviated some of that with permit parking, but that's, that's not the the end-all solution, we need to examine that a little closer too.
Thank you. Alman Glad?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment on that, uh, if I remember right, twenty some odd years ago, Chief, I think you were so, you were around at, yeah.
I've been here twenty years.
Did we start putting like restrictions of how many hours or whatever?
We loosened those restrictions about six years.
And what I was gonna say is, is if we ever did that again, I mean, it got out of hand, right?
No, what happened was the downtown business owners complained about two-hour parking, um, they they feel it's long enough. So they complained to council members and then they brought that back to us, you, council did. And so we wrote an ordinance and upped it to four hours, cause the the downtown business owners thought that was a more appropriate amount of time for somebody to park and be able to frequent those businesses without being held accountable for violating the two-hour mark.
But I thought, vaguely remember, and again, this was so many years ago, in fact, I think a lot of it was addressed even before I was on the council, when I was sitting out there. That, uh, some of those restrictions were to eliminate, uh, the employees from just all parking and taking up the spots.
I don't believe that, we've never had any restrictions that legally can reject one person from parking in a public parking spot to another. So we've never been, that I know of, in twenty years, been able to enforce that.
Okay, I.
We've worked, we've been able to work with some of the newer businesses to relocate them temporarily in some different areas off Court Street, the old Court Street building to get some people to park over there. And we've worked with them on getting permits, just so we can mitigate the problem, but we really, it's a, it's a future topic for council to probably take action on this summer in order to alleviate some more parking issues, that's for sure. The study will probably show that too.
Can a business call the police department if they'd like an escort if they're leaving late at night?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alman Sand? With the passage of the committees, I'd just like to ask Troy if he could contact the the new, the members of the public works committee to, uh, to have just. Because of you in in this position, uh, like to have a a brief introduction meeting and just be able to come with a list of topics. Not discussion of topics, but a list of topics that might be something to discuss in the next nine, nine to twelve months.
You want, you want me to prepare the list of topics?
Yeah, and then, and then in in the meeting, we'll just have a, just an open discussion for any added, uh, uh, from the members of the public works committee.
I can, I can do that.
Thank you. And what times, dates, evenings are are best suited?
And obviously, Troy, with you and only you right now, uh, you know, keep in mind that he is the only one at this point. So, keep that in mind, don't, don't kill yourself, so.
No, it's, and let, just let me read it, it's brief introduction and topics to, to lay out that would not, would be discussed at later dates.
Okay.
Alman Glad?
As far as all the talk about the drainage ditch, I just wanna remind everyone of the situation in my ward of probably a quarter of my ward is a swamp right now. I mean, we, we're talking about drainage ditch, we have people who have water going to their front, to their driveway, out, some people have water going to their mailbox, so.
So I'm, so I'm, just as follows that, uh, we, um, we are asking for, uh, some additional modeling for a few projects we've been looking at to give you guys a little better clarification as of just where things stand with, uh, that overall Lakeland Park drainage study. And we would like to present something at some point later, uh, this summer.
Right, any other council comments? All right, Alman Glad?
I was just gonna ask one question, Troy, uh, you know what the intensity of the, that rain was that, you know, as far as considering the condition of Lakeland Park right now?
I, I don't think we've had a specific, I'm, I'm not certain we've had a specific event of of a, of a grand magnitude, like a ten-plus year event. I, I think, um, we've just had a very, very tough month, I think we're upwards of eight inches of rain and.
Due to how much rain in that, the intensity.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, the return periods of the rains are typically paced upon a duration and intensity, whereas what we've had here is just kind of accumulative stacking up of of rain over, over the month. And and it's, and it's finished, it's finished, and every single project wrapping up from, uh, last year, so it's finished.
I, I was just kinda curious because, you know, again, I could be at work in Crystal Lake and it could just come down here really crazy. I mean, we had a couple days ago in Crystal Lake, it was pouring rain and I talked to my wife and she said, we didn't get a drop here, you know? So, I just was kinda curious as far as how intense some of these rains have been, so, thank you.
Any others, do you know? All right, um, staff, you can go ahead and get out of here, I'd ask that, Troy, you staying here? Yeah, no? No, I mean, I guess not, if you don't, you know?
That's about HR, we'll, we'll take care of it.
All right, we're good, you guys can all.
It's just a brief update.